Mayor has no business.
She has no business being gone.
This mayor has no business.
I make just a comment.
You bet.
I thank all who have made Main Street and Center Street enchanting. I'm through with 2020 personally.
You've got about 28 days to go or so.
I know, I know. And I loved the look and the festive look that we've got. It has really enhanced our downtown and made things bright, so I thank those who.
I echo that. You jumped on my comments there, but I appreciate it so much. I want to make a special shout out to our Parks Division who I reached out to late in the afternoon, and they came down an hour before the activities and emptied all of the trashcans on Main Street. So please express my thanks and gratitude to them for that effort. I spoke to an individual and he said, "Nope, it's gotta be right. It's gotta be right for the event." And he was out there on a Saturday emptying those. So thank the Parks Division for that and the Street Department as well. So Ryan, pass that along if you would, please.
Okay, any other council comments? Okay, moving into staff comments. Staff have any other comments?
I have a broken microphone. I have three things, three areas that I wanted to update you on. One is the, with UDOT, we have two projects that will be coming your way fairly soon. In their efforts to redo the bridge over I-15 where Coal Creek Road goes over, they've come to us and asked us to dedicate a little more right-of-way over on the Kitty Hawk Drive side. So that's going to be coming through fairly soon. There's a project on the south end of Main Street that most of you, I think, are familiar with. It is a group that's acquired somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 acres. They want to do a mixed development there. But part of their development plans require the frontage road to go away. So UDOT's given us a few options on how the city can help the development facilitate the frontage road going away. And here's basically the options. Option one was the developer by the frontage road. Option two is the city by the frontage road. Option three, UDOT has a program with some of these roads where they can, in essence, lease that property to the municipality for an extended period of time. And it's restricted lease where the municipality has to promise to just landscape it and maintain it and make it look nice. So the developer approached us with that, and our response to the developer was, "We're not interested in landscaping and maintaining it and make it look nice, but if you want to incorporate it in your development and landscape it and maintain it and make it look nice, we'll do the lease with UDOT." So that might be coming in front of you soon to help move that project forward.
Couldn't we have a UDOT option where they would donate the land?
UDOT? They didn't put that one forward.
Yeah, I didn't figure.
No, they didn't put that one up. The second area is the lease with the trap club that we entered a little while ago for the white-sided building down by the old animal shelter. They came and turned in the keys. As we got moving into that lease, they found out the cost to move the gas line over there. And then they debated on just using electric heaters, and their board decided at the end of the day that they would not like to move forward with the lease. So they've terminated their interest in that building and brought the keys back. And the last area is Rec Center. I talked to the architect right after Thanksgiving. He had indicated before Thanksgiving they would have everything done by Thanksgiving. He's indicated now that the structural folks got hit with COVID and they're three weeks behind. So that's where those plans are at.
Could I go back to the trap club, please, for just a moment? So I know there's plans for the city to demolish the other building, the brick building there. Eventually, I don't know when that is, but would we do the same thing with this building? Or would we just leave it sole standing? Or do we know yet?
We haven't asked Jeff to take it down yet. So Darren's been working with another entity that might be interested in using that building. If there's a use that's a reasonable use, then we'll pursue that. Nobody's asked to do the, and we're not really willing to lease out the old concrete building.
Right, no, I agree with that.
So the plan is not to destroy the white-sided building.
But we don't want to make, if we don't lease it, we don't want it to sit there and get weeds growing all around it and everything else. So it's, we've got to do some activity with it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. That's all.
Okay, any other staff comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our business agenda with our public comments. If you have something you would like to discuss, if you would come up to the microphone and state your name and be as brief as possible.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Fane. I'm with Southern Utility. First off, I want to say, wow, what an amazing job you guys did on the lights this year. I didn't get to come to the lighting ceremony, but as I got up and got ready for work Monday morning, the news, Fox 13, did an awesome piece on it, and it just looked like some big, beautiful city, and people everywhere were smiling, so great job. We very much appreciate that. It's definitely making our community that much more special. I just wanted to come in today and give an update where we kind of are this year with Ice Rink Project. We have started the construction, working with the county up at Woods Ranch. We're hoping to be open by next week. Just kind of depending on the weather, it's been a little finicky. I want it to stay warm one day this year and cold the next. But everything's pretty well set up, and we would like to invite you guys to come out and enjoy it with us when it's open, and bring your family, bring the grandkids. And we're just happy to have something this year. The public has been absolutely insane. The amount of people as we've been setting up, I'd say probably 600, 700 in the last few weekends that come up. We have about 50 a day that stop and talk to us and are just excited. There's one elderly gal from down here that's pulling out her skates to come up, and she says, "It reminds me of the Mervin ads when we were younger for the Christmas sales." And a little old lady's just outside the door going, "Open, open, open." And she's sent me a message twice now, just going, "Open, open, open." So it's great. I'm really glad that we chose to pursue this. And we wanted to let you know, we still are, I mean, we'll always work on this rink, but we are still looking to push forward and bring something a little bit more tangible to our community down here in the valley, so that we can have something continuing going on.
Carrie, quick question.
Yep.
There's been a lot of comment about, has a vendor or anybody, are they providing any rental skates? Have you worked any of that out or not?
I'm working with some folks at SUU, and I guess the head of their recreation program is looking to purchase some skates. And we're just trying to get sizing and things and numbers worked out this week. And they will be offering, hopefully, for rent up at the mountain retreat up there at SUU, just right down the road from us. So there will be that option this year, hopefully. It looks like it's a go ahead.
That's great.
Yep.
Do you have the necessary equipment to sort of maintain the ice and that sort of thing?
We do. We built a Zamboni.
You built one?
We did. We built one.
Maybe you ought to patent that if it works for you.
Yep. So because we're not able to store a lot up there, we worry. They've had some vandalism issues in the past, and we just want to make sure everything's protected. So it'll be coming up and down the mountain with us on the trailer as we go to work every day, so.
Well, congratulations to you and your staff, and, well, staff, your volunteers and your husband and everybody else for making it happen. I know it took a mountain to get up and, pardon the pun there, but congratulations to you for following it through.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And we appreciate all of you guys' help without you pushing as well. Things like this don't happen in the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carrie.
Laura Henderson, I would just like to echo what Carrie said about the beautiful lights. It was really a lot of fun with Santa coming in on the helicopter. Boy, he's gotten in gear with technology. And I'd also like to thank the city for the new improved, new and improved street signs on Dewey Avenue. Thank you. Those just went up. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I would like to read just a statement. The Linda Bush of our residents here in Cedar City asks us to wish happy holidays to all and thanks to everybody for all they do, which I thought was nice. And I think that would include all of our citizens who have helped with the many different projects through this year and everything else. I think as a community, that's thanks to all the community as a whole. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. The approval of minutes dated November 4th and 18th, 2020. Ratify bills dated November 23rd and pay bills dated November 30th. Approve terminating the city's right of first refusal to acquire water rights and approve the 2021 council meeting schedule. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into our action. Part of the meeting, the first item on item five is to consider an ordinance amending the general plan at 1800 North, 3500 West from low-density residential to rural estate.
Dallas Buckner, Go Civil Engineering. So this is a general plan amendment and a zone change. The first one is a general plan. This is roughly 40 acres. It was originally called Hunter Glen Phase 3, so it's the piece that's kind of northwest of Hunter Glen Phase 1. It has the sewer lift station detention basin on it. But general plan for R1, we're asking for RE, which is a less dense zone, and that's why the general plan is being amended.
Okay, any further comments?
I have just a quick question on it. When it's fully developed, how many lots will it contain?
So the city ordinance won't allow more than 80 without secondary.
That's why I was asking if there was a secondary access.
And so with this being 40 acres and the RE zone is half-acre density, the absolute max you could get would be 80. But with the lift station and the detention basins and then the area you lose for road right-of-ways, it'll be, it'll be less than that.
The, sorry, the only other question I'd have is, do we risk kind of land-locking the surrounding parcels as well? Or what kind of accesses are going to be left in that area? And I know this isn't a good map to show on, but we've just run into that issue in the past with some as far as access. So some of these other areas, do they have access in other spots or?
Well, so actually, it's interesting. This piece is going to have to provide a secondary access because Hunter Glen Phase 1 is, has like 74, 75. So we actually have to provide a secondary access either through Hunter Glen Phase 2 or look at other options to the west or to the north. I think a lot of these parcels are pretty good size and have road frontage to the west. Like you said, it's hard to see on this map. But as far as connecting into adjacent pieces of land at the zone change phase, I don't even have a preliminary layout for the subdivision yet.
Yeah, no, and I realize that. I just, I want to make sure we're always thinking of that just because it comes up. So, okay, we'll appreciate it. I don't see any problem with this.
Okay, any further comments? If not, I'm entertaining motion. Move to approve the ordinance.
Second?
Okay, roll call vote beginning with Councilman Isom.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, item number six is to consider an ordinance amending the zone at 1800 North, 3500 West from annex transition to rural real estate, rural estate residential. Is that right? Okay, Dallas.
Yep, Dallas Buckner, Go Civil.
Same as you.
Anything else?
This is the zone change component.
I'd make a motion to consider an ordinance amending the 1800 North, 35 West from annex transition to rural estate residential.
Second?
Okay, roll call beginning with Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, item number seven is to consider an ordinance amending the transportation master plan by relocating a 75-foot master planned road from approximately 700 South to 1850 South between Westview Drive and 5700 West.
Dallas Buckner, Go Civil. So this is the master plan road amendment that we had brought through, through planning commission with a positive recommendation. We had kind of a lengthy discussion last time. I don't know if there's any other additional questions from?
Yeah, I've kind of got the same concerns, I guess, as far as, I guess, what are the long-term ramifications of this? And I don't know if anyone else has new insights or?
Well, I have similar concerns. I, I'm not sure, we just, we just approved a change to the current location just in 2019, and now we're asking to have it moved again. So I'm concerned why we have, feel the need to do that when we already have. I know we have some city infrastructure there already, so I have concerns about it. Maybe you can enlighten us as to the need to do this, because I don't see it.
Sure. Well, so as far as the city infrastructure goes, I mean, the master plan, the infrastructure that's in that 12-inch water, as far as the water master plan, there's another road that's master planned north-south that that can tie in. I mean, water is a pressure system, so as long as it's looped, I don't see that there's a big concern between having the 12-inch here and tying into some future. There are a number of stub roads that come out of Shirts Creek. As far as the planning and moving it, I mean, when this transportation master plan was originally laid out, it was done in such a fashion where they just said, "Okay, every mile, we're going to lay it out." And so it was laid out in a location that wouldn't work when it was originally planned. And moving forward with this development and coming through all the hurdles with Phase 1 between the road and the water and all that, we just moved it. But for the way that the subdivisions laid out, the concept, it's not, it's not aesthetically that pleasing, which isn't necessarily a city's concern. But I think the positives on the city side is I don't know that it needs to be a 75-foot road. By moving it to Shirts Creek Road, you have an existing 66-foot road that can move traffic east-west today. You don't have to wait for, you don't have to wait for the other 8,000 feet to be built into the future. And so there's a functionality that you can use today. The reason why we're bringing it through right now is because Phase 1 has been constructed. From what I understand, a lot of those lots are pre-sold already. And so we're looking at where Phase 2 is going to go. And at some point, we're going to get to that 80-lot threshold where we're going to have to punch onto Westview. And so that's going to need to be decided. And that's the reason that we're bringing it forward right now is because we need to know if it's going to be 75-foot corridor, you know, curb gutter sidewalk, or if it's going to be another road that's more characteristic of the rest of the neighborhood.
And that's, I know that that is one of my concerns is right there. I mean, even if everything there was built out, I mean, yeah, 75-foot curb gutter sidewalk gives me a little heartburn. It just seems like a huge waste of money and taxpayer dollars to maintain that in rural estate. And granted, I know, I spent every summer in Mellingville where we don't have that stuff and we don't want that stuff. But I just, that is the one, the one thing I do see. And I don't know, staff, if, if we, if we were inclined to keep this as a master planned road, but, and I realize, you know, master transportation plan update and things like that, I have no problem with this where it's at. If it's like 66 feet, no curb gutter sidewalk, because I think it's a huge waste, then I'm totally fine with just leaving it as is. If that's not, if we don't have the flexibility to do that, I am kind of inclined to move it just because I just think it's a huge waste of money. But, so I don't know what our flexibility is in the near or long term.
So if you're asking what staff can do, staff's going to follow the master plan.
Right, so, so.
The city council wants to amend that master plan.
Uh-huh.
That's, that's who can do that.
So that is a, is, that is a city transportation master plan provision that sets the road width curb gutter sidewalk parameters?
Curb gutter sidewalk is set by the engineering standard.
That's an engineering standard, yeah, and which makes sense in town.
Council controls those as well.
Right, okay. I see.
So Jonathan, tell us where you are with this.
Well, you know, we have some concerns with, first of all, narrowing it up to 66. We don't have the numbers showing that 66 would be adequate. And as I think Dallas mentioned, that requires an engineering study, which we don't have at this point. The other issue is, by living it up to the border, it would be in the county, and the city wouldn't have any control over, over that road anymore. So it'd be much more difficult to drive it and curb gutter sidewalk. And then we also have the concern with the water line being on location. We'd like to keep the gas supply utility in the same corridor.
And we do already have a water line. That is a supply, not, not waste collections, but that is a supply line?
Yes.
Okay. And then Dallas, again, so what's your, what's your timeline as far as Phase 2 and all that stuff?
Well, I mean, as far as, we just turned in the as-built, and I think that people are pulling building permits on Phase 1 already. There's only 31 lots in Phase 1. And so from what I understand, there's quite, I think, over half of them pre-sold. So I mean, we're at a point where, depending on the outcome of this, I mean, we could be starting to look at the design for Phase 2 and the phase boundary in the next month or so. As far as the things that Jonathan touched on, so I think the main thing in my mind as far as whether this remains a master planned road and moving it to Shirts Creek is that with a master planned document, I mean, it's at a very high level when you're just laying it out. Generally, you lay those out along existing roads like this one. I mean, most of the county, most of the master planned roads that are shown on the city master plan are in the county. And it matches a lot of the existing conditions similar to, and I had that in my email that I think you guys had seen. But there's a lot of, I mean, by moving it up there, the question to me is, the level of service for that road is, a 66-foot wide road, for the engineering standards, is 3,200 traffic, or I forget, trips a day. And for a 75-foot road, it was greater than 32. When I look at this road up here, which is 800 South, this to me is a major conveyor of traffic east-west coming from 56. This road here to the south, two miles to the south, is going to be the South Mountain Estates Road that's going to convey a lot of stuff from Walmart and I-15 east-west. Shirts Creek Road basically deadens into the Westview subdivision, so there's not that big volume of cars going east-west. You're also with the Spring Creek subdivision and the Westview Estates and also 4B Ranch. Those are all acre to two-acre lots. So you have a very low density as far as the area that's going to be using that road. And so that's kind of why it's almost a two-phased question is can we move it? And then does it really need to be 75 feet?
So in your renderings, kind of, I realize it was probably earlier on, but were you planning on having homes front to that or to back up to that road?
For the 75 foot?
Yeah, what was the plan there?
Yeah, they would, I mean, yes, they would. Because to do, I mean, you're talking about there's a cost with, especially comparatively to a 45-foot borrowed ditch road to a 75-foot, to have single-fronted roads, meaning that you have a 75-foot corridor and then a row of lots and then another road instead of having two lots. I mean, that's just, there's a big cost with that. And so, yeah, the plan would be to, I mean, we obviously have kind of a master plan for the subdivision. And a lot of those lots where we don't have to have them front because they have other roads, then I think they would likely not back onto it, but there would be a number of houses. Everything that's not on a corner essentially with another road that would back onto it.
And, and in that rural estates, you know, you're not doing curb gutter sidewalk in the residential streets in there?
Correct, yeah. So the city has a separate residential estates road section, which is a 75-foot, and then there's asphalt, there's a paint stripe on it, and then there's kind of like a four or five-foot wide asphalt path, but there's no curb gutter sidewalk.
Right.
And so that's where, going through the middle of a subdivision like this, you'll have a couple roads to the south that are that style. Then you'll have two or three roads to the north. And then right through the middle, you'll have this, this road that's almost twice as, not twice as big, but substantially bigger.
Can you help me understand, just so I'm clear on this? Are you, is your biggest concern that the request is for a 75-foot road from an aesthetic point of view for the subdivision? Or is it the curb gutter and sidewalk? Or is it both?
Well, it's both, and the other factor too is just that there is a, there's a city, there's a developer cost, but there's also the city reimbursement. And so to me, the, the request is to move the 75-foot master planned road to Shirts Creek because it's currently designed as a 75-foot master planned road. My secondary question is, does it really need to be 75 feet? But the concern is just that there's the aesthetics and everything associated with putting a big corridor through a subdivision that has a certain style that's consistent with everything else that's already existing out there. But then there's also just the, there's the city reimbursement component and there's the developer component when you have a road that's already a 66-foot wide road existing that can be used today to bring that traffic east-west.
Well, I think that may be the question for today, but it may not be the answer for tomorrow. Because, don't forget, I mean, a new high school is going to be built out there. An elementary school is going to be built out there. They're developing South Mountain Estates out there. I mean, that whole area is going to continue to be developed. And so I think we have to look down the road to say, what is the best way to get that traffic in and around that area? And I don't know if it's 75 or 66, but we have to think about the next 10 to 15 years, not about right now.
Yeah, I just, from, and that's why I bring up these other two roads, because this road right here is 5700 West. Quichpa is not that much further to the west. And so we're really talking about an existing subdivision that takes up, you know, at least half of these folks you would think that are going south might use this road. And then you've got this subdivision. And so if you were to cut these into, I kind of, I tried to do an analysis with Jonathan of just cutting up areas and saying, "These ones go here," but it just doesn't work because of, it's just, you never know who's going north, south, east, west.
Well, you don't know how people are.
Yeah, you have to model it. But as far as this area with the road where it is, is pretty much fully developed to the north. To the south, we're starting to see the rural estates on the south side. You already have this, which is not taking traffic east-west. And that's where I say, I don't, there's no question to me that this one, the 75-foot's warranted. This one's warranted. I mean, we already know how busy South Mountain Drive is. And then with the high school and the different school district properties there and there, I mean, there's going to definitely be a big volume of traffic going across this one. But to me, I don't see a whole lot, especially with Quichpa being right there. I don't know that there's going to be a, you know, some giant superstore that's going to bring a lot of traffic through there and increase it from a 66 to a 75 or warrant the widening.
So what we did in 2019, is there any reason for that?
Why we moved it to the south?
Yeah, I mean, are we beyond that discussion? Should we just move it back to where it was master planned and be done with it?
Well, the problem with where it was master planned, it was, it, when it was planned, it was just laid out on the section lines.
I understand, mile apart and all of that.
Yeah, and so the problem with where it is right here is that in order to get that as a road, you would have to take, for 75 feet, you'd have to take the half width, which would be 37 and a half feet, out of everyone's backyard along the entire Spring Creek subdivision. So that's what I, that's kind of what I say when it was planned. It was just kind of arbitrary laid out on the section lines without a lot of thought. And that's where, to me, having an existing road that's a 66-foot wide right-of-way would have made more sense to have that as the road.
With, with what we're doing with UDOT and the transportation study we're doing, I just feel squeamish about moving one way or the other and locking things in, just because.
Well, yeah, in addition to what all of the others have said, all of a sudden you turn Shirts Creek into a master planned busy road, and that's developed all the way out that road with homes on there. And I'm not sure how fair it is to those people. And I'm not sure how fair it is to those people who just built on a regular county road to turn it into a major corridor. So plus the concerns that my other councilmen have expressed.
I think that's the same case as pretty much every other master, I mean, it's the same with all the folks on Westview.
Right, but it, it was master planned there, so, so that's why when they built there.
I see what you're saying.
It, it was a master planned road and I, I worry about all of a sudden throwing it over into their neighborhood when that wasn't on the master plan, whether they looked at it or not.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a concern to me.
All right, and I, I agree with Councilwoman Hartley there. Uh, my, uh, my, my biggest hang-up on here is just curb gutter sidewalk out there. Like, and it's rural estates, it's not like we're zoning it and building high density either. And, and, uh, I realize that's not the issue at hand, but I, I do think as we're updating things, we, we do need to take a, because, because we as a city, our taxpayers are responsible for that curb gutter sidewalk maintenance once it's put in. And our tax base out there per linear foot of road is, is much smaller than, uh, in, in town. I, I just, I think we really need to look at that. I, I would, uh, I, I'm not inclined to move it, but I do think we need to take a look at what we're requiring, um, in, in light of the circumstance. I don't know how to objectively, uh, you know, set a hard and fast rule for that. But I think especially in this situation, we kind of create an absurd result.
I don't know if this makes a difference, but I believe that everything out there is general planned as R1 too. So you're talking about a lower density for the general plan. Obviously, the general plan gets amended all the time, but.
Unless we do some lakeside condos at Quichapaw, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I'm much more inclined to either leave it where it is existing or move it back to its location from a year ago rather than move it up to Shirts Creek Road. I don't know how my other councilmen feel about that and I don't know what the ramifications are from the city's standpoint. Uh, if we were to either move it back to its original designation or leave it where it is.
So if we move it back, isn't that already part of the development?
Well, yeah, so I mean, moving it, moving it back's not a great option because now you have the whole side along the north that's already developed as Spring Creek and then you have phase one. Because generally the way it works is you take it out of either side and so moving it back's not great. And there's also the big Quichapaw channel, or I mean, the Shirts Creek channel comes down and then runs all the way along the backside of Spring Creek. So that's another thing that there's a, there's a channel that the, I think the county's actually been improving it from Quichapaw upstream. But that's, that's kind of the, where it was originally laid out, just flat out doesn't, doesn't work.
Is that where it moves back into the county, right there? Is that move it back into the county property right there?
Uh, well, this, so the city boundary, this is part of that, I think it was called the Cordero, but it was, the city boundary goes right here and then goes way out and then wraps back around. And so it straddles, where it was originally laid out, it straddled the, the county-city line.
Okay. Any further comments or are we ready for a motion?
I, I would move to leave it where it is with my noted objections to the way we master plan or, uh, our, our engineering standards on our master planned roads. And I hope we can address that sooner than later. So, so the motion would be to leave it where it is.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, beginning with, uh, Councilman Isom.
Aye.
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 Okay.
All right, thank you.
Dallas. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, which is to consider an ordinance commending chapter twenty-six of the city ordinances dealing with the student housing district. All right, Don, you're going to take that.
All right, thank you, counsel. Don Bedrow, City Engineering. Uh, so recently staff was tasked with the developing development standards for the S-H-D area. Uh, basically design guidelines, aesthetic type, uh, standards. And there was quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting. And Jonathan, if you could throw up that, uh, powerpoint. So I've kind of broken this down, um, into, uh, basic, basically just broke it down into its key components. So the council can, uh, look at it piece by piece and I'll try to be as brief as I can. Uh, so the setbacks, currently the property's owned as S-H-D, do not have required setbacks with the exception of the front setback, which is fifteen feet. Uh, so there's no change to that front setback and the proposal is, uh, to go to an R-three standard, uh, six-foot minimum with a total of sixteen feet for both sides. That's for a three-story building and a ten-foot side setback for any building R-three stories. That would take you up to that fifteen, or a fifty-foot height limit. Uh, and keep in mind that height limit is measured to the top plate. Um, and then a rear setback of twenty feet. So that is the proposal on setbacks. And then, I don't know if you want me to just, uh, keep going here or do you want to talk about them while they're on the screen?
Yeah, I think, uh, one of my questions for my fellow council members would be kind of what format do we want to do? I, um, I've been talking to a couple of you, um, separately at different points during the week. But I, I think maybe, um, maybe we, as, as we do vote, maybe we want to discuss and vote on each provision individually rather than entirely voting the whole thing up or down. Um, I don't know.
Can we do that, Tyler, and then come back and, and, uh, make a motion to approve the proposals with the votes taken on the sections or something?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Because I don't think there's any way we can either vote up or vote down the entire ordinance as it currently sits.
If it's going to get too convoluted of taking a lot out or adding a lot in, my suggestion would be let's try to get at least three head nods on what it should have to be. And let's table it for a week. Don and I will bring it back, actually do a clean copy, bring it back to the council. That, that's another option.
Well, we might be able to take certain sections though and, and make decisions on that, but it's, it's however you think is best to proceed.
Well, let's just, let's just start going down the road.
Let's do the sections and then see.
Well, let's take the site, let's take the setbacks to start with and then maybe go from there. Is that okay, Don?
Yes, absolutely.
With, with respect to setbacks, I'm not sure we need to legislate that. That's my personal opinion. I, I think that, uh, building these buildings and, and creating these units, there's going to be a very practical and functional side to setbacks because you've got to be able to get in there and build and maintain.
And there's still fire and building code they're subject to as well.
So as long as, yeah, so as long as we adhere to the fire building code, which is what is in place at this point, I just don't see a need for, for additional setbacks. That's my personal opinion.
I agree with that.
I, I think, well, I was just going to say, I think there is an importance on side setbacks. Uh, whether it ends up being a total of sixteen feet, because I realize there's some concerns from these lots in the older parts of our city that are more rectangular in shape than anything else. Um, but if you put a thirty-five or thirty-eight or forty-foot building next to a residence, it is going to have an effect. And you're right, there will be probably three or four feet that is got to be there for the exterior work or whatever it is, whatever it is. Um, so I personally would like to keep the six-feet minimum, but whether it goes down to a total of twelve feet or ten feet total on both sides as a total, um, and, um, perhaps the, for me, the rear setbacks is probably too excessive and we probably do need to look at that so we can make it work. Uh, I don't see anything wrong with item two in this, including the corner street sides. To me, that's just, uh, an addition and I don't think that really should affect anything in a negative aspect. It just clarifies, what I think people are already doing, it just clarifies it for me.
And I, and I ask you if, uh, if there was a normal setback so that construction could be done, right? Maybe it was five, six feet.
Well, yeah.
Uh, if you added four feet to that with a thirty-five foot building, would that make an appreciable difference on the impact to the neighbors? I, I don't think so, personally. Once again, I just, I hate to legislate something that those who do construction and, and create architecture, uh, they can, they can manage that.
But if we keep things too broad and there's no legislation, then, and I don't know if this is the, the case you're talking about specifically, we could run into other problems unintended where things are wide open and they say, well, it doesn't say, I couldn't do it, so we did it. Whatever that might happen to be. So I think we do have to set something, but I don't know what that is. I don't know what the appropriate number is.
Right, and, and I'd, I'd, uh, I'd sent this out, I, um, I, I made sure with our city attorney this is okay. But I, there were a couple of these things that I, uh, in, in discussing with staff and residents and builders that I, I felt that maybe we could adjust, um, in a conscientious way. And I sent that language to council, uh, so that we could, um, discuss it publicly.
Sorry.
Records clear, that language isn't included in the public record.
Right, and it's in, yeah, so all that language that I sent to the council is public record. But, um, so on this one, I, in talking to, uh, anyway, I, I think one of the aspects, uh, I think the greatest fear ever since this thing was proposed, uh, was, uh, well, what if someone builds a fifty-foot building right next to my house? And, um, and part of the, you know, the world changes. There is a huge social cost to saying kids can't live near the university. Um, and so we, we do need to be aware of that as well. Um, but I thought, uh, especially with a timeline, uh, that would, uh, contemplate those who have already spent money on, uh, land acquisition and architects. So if we said something to the effect of, um, you know, keeping, keeping this existing, uh, setback language on the sides, but, but adding that, you know, for anyone applying after January first of twenty-twenty-two, uh, that, uh, if, if, if the side borders an owner occupied, single-family residence, that, then you're at a ten-foot minimum setback. I know that's not a huge difference, but I, I think it give, would help give some, uh, peace of mind to those who are most worried about the character of their neighborhood. Without unduly burdening those who've already spent money on, um, on investing in our community.
I wouldn't be really opposed to the setback next to a residential property, but I don't think we should designate whether it's owner occupied or a rental because that puts the onus on staff to decide what really is owner occupied. If you buy a house and your kid lives in it and has four buddies that live there, is that owner occupied or is that a rental?
Right.
Oh, and it can change at any time too. So I would say if we do something like that, I would say it was just any residential property that's existing there.
Right, and I, 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 that was one concern I had with, with that provision. How, how could we do it objectively? I, I mean, one way to kind of check it is, uh, you know, is the tax notice being mailed to that, that address? Or is it being mailed somewhere else? I mean, that's not a scientific way to do it, but I know that can help, um, the, uh.
But who does that?
Well, and, and yeah, so that's the question is who, who would do that? And, and I would, I guess, uh, could that be, um, you know, could you obtain an, I guess, an affidavit from? So if you're a builder and, and you're next to a single-family residence, um, you know, could you obtain proof that that's not owner occupied or, or proof that it is, that, hey, I don't know. Um, so do we have any guidance on?
Neighbor wants to cooperate.
Right.
Sometimes neighbors don't want to cooperate with the guy that's building the new structure.
Exactly, so I, I don't know the best way to verify that.
What's the, what's the reason just to limit it to owner occupied?
Um, well, because, I mean, I guess in my mind, um, you know, we, we, uh, I, I think a lot of the things we hear about concerns about the apartments, they're actually, um, symptoms of the, um, non-owner occupied dwellings. So you have, you build an apartment, you follow all the regulations, you do all the things you're supposed to do, you have all the parking spaces and people still park in front of your unit because the house, the single-family house next door has eight kids and three bedrooms. And, you know, you know, you know what I mean? So I, I, I have a little less empathy for that, I guess, than I do for the, um, uh, owner occupant.
I think from, uh, at least, I don't want to say staff, my opinion is if, if it's an impact-driven, uh, setback and it's, uh, designed to minimize impacts to that existing older, single-family home, I don't think we need to check if it's owner occupied.
Good.
That would, that would put a burden on us to, to try to verify that.
Is this a provision that council wants us to move forward with?
What's your thoughts, Craig? Would you be amenable to that one caveat on the setbacks? To have a ten-foot minimum next to a residential property or not?
I, once again, I, I don't, I don't understand how four feet.
Will make a big difference.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't see it.
I don't think, I don't think it does either.
And when I look at what has been done in that zone, in the S-H-D zone so far, it's all driven by a market. People out there trying to wave their hands faster than anybody else to get renters to come to their property. They've done very tasteful projects and they've, and they have blended into the community. And I, I don't think that this is an issue personally, so.
So, um, in that case, if, i- it sounds like on, as far as E, uh, perhaps the change to subsection two is, is the one we would want to keep. And that's just the clarifying one about, uh, corner lots.
Corner street sides. That, that does make sense to me.
So should we vote on that before we move from setbacks or?
Somebody has to make a motion.
I'd be, be willing to make a motion that we adopt that change, E-two, but not the rest.
I would second that.
Okay.
Man?
Bring in the favor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Yeah, well.
Well, this, this looks like it's going to get complicated all the way through. If we could get this method to give us direction to draft a final ordinance and bring it to you next week.
I see.
Could we please do that?
Well, there's some direction right there.
Thank you.
Okay.
On that one.
Sorry about that, okay.
Yeah, there's three and then one to pull.
Okay.
Tom Jett, maybe I'm, I'm missing something. We talked about setbacks on the sides.
Mm-hmm.
Are we saying it's, I can build right up, assuming the fire department has no, no problem with this. Does that mean I can move, build a home and butt it up against Scott's fence?
You did if you meet all the.
How would you, how would you do that without trespassing on the property next to you?
Oh, gosh, you see, you see sky rises, skyscrapers built straight up with block from, from one side. They never, downtown, every one of these buildings were built.
So I guess I could bring a crane in. I, I guess I could bring a crane in.
Probably have to get an easement from my neighbor if I wanted to do that.
I mean, legally, you could do that, yes.
Well, why are we, so if I want to build?
That's how it is right now.
Yeah, it's so, well, no, it's not that way. Right now, you have to have.
Yes, it is. If you need the uniform.
You have zero setback for S-H-D?
Yes.
Yeah, now for practical purposes, because of the fire code.
Yeah.
Um, it's prohibitively expensive to do it.
Yes.
Nobody, well, about six feet is the shortest practical consideration, but in theory, they could go to zero.
But, but with that, I think we're chasing boogeymen.
Right.
Well, I just wanted clarification more than.
You know, all practicality, so.
Okay, all right. I, I didn't know it was already that way. I, I've never followed the S-H-D zone that closely, so, well, thank you.
Should, it's great reading. Are we moving on?
Yes, uh, John, could you, we can skip this little diagram here. I think we beat that up. Uh, the next one is landscaping, uh, landscaping plan required. And generally this asks for a, a tree at every thirty feet along those street property lines within that landscape order. Uh, it also talks about a maximum of fifty percent to be rock and gravel. Trees don't have to be linear. We want to make sure that, uh, fire has adequate access. It was brought to my attention, um, that some of these areas have soils that are not real conducive to heavy watering around the foundation. So, uh, that might, if the council wants to entertain this, then that might be an exception if the soils report or determine that, hey, turf doesn't work here. We don't want to get the ground saturated around the building. Obviously, that's a safe, I'm sorry. want to get the ground saturated around the building. Obviously, that's a safe, I'm sorry, obviously, that's a safety issue. And then, letter D, it was entertaining that maybe we don't want, maybe we need to eliminate that. We can develop something working with our expertise on staff.
Yeah, I, I-
Well, we either need to change that wording, that it's a predetermined list or a pre-approved list, so the very first application doesn't have to come to city council and say, can we do it with this tree?
I think we could lean on our arborist.
We have an arborist on staff, and they should be helping determine what trees work-
I would, I would be-
Do you want to determine the trees or arborists?
I, well, I, I would be inclined to strike letter D entirely, but then work on a general, you know, street tree ordinance. I don't think we need to have necessarily an approved list, but, you know, I, I know there are some varieties that just simply don't work here, that get planted, and then they die 10 years later, and it looks like, it just looks bad. And so if we're going to require trees, you know, maybe there's some that we would prohibit, but other than that, I, I don't, you know, I'm not inclined to, anyway, I, I think, I think we could strike D, and then if we want to address it as part of a separate ordinance that applies not just to this zone but all over, then I, I think we could do that. And I don't know where council would-
Well, I know that Spencer Jones has a green thumb, but some developers may not. And they may not know what kind of tree to even plant, so I don't think I'd be wrong at providing a list of the 15 or 18 varieties of trees that work in our city, you know?
Maybe it's even a suggestive list.
Yeah, it could be a suggest, suggested-
And, and that's what I mean. I, I would love to provide, get that list together as soon as we can, but not make it a requirement as part of the SHD ordinance. So if we wanted to pass a street tree ordnancy in the next couple of months, I'm more than open to that, but I, I don't think it needs to be a separate part of this ordinance.
And I know there was some concern that came out of some of the developers in the Home Builders Association regarding landscape plan. I, I don't think the intent here is that we hire a landscape architect. I think they indicate on the plans, a tree will go here, a tree will go here, a tree, this will be, this will be turf, this will be so-and-so, but it doesn't have to be a detailed color rendering of-
No, I, I don't see the need for a landscape architect.
No.
It could be a percentage of what they want to do. I don't think, I don't think every species needs to be called out on the plan with a-
Can we say as much and just simply say a simple landscape plan is required?
We can say that, sure.
Yeah, we don't need to have color renderings.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need all that detail. And, and to Don's point earlier, soil should dictate what we do.
Yeah, that, that, I think should be included.
So 50%, I don't think, I don't think works, just because some soils, if you put turf in there, I mean, they tore up the whole quad area between the library and the old business building on campus. They did similar things across the street at a, at an LDS church, because the soil absorbed water in such a way that it deteriorated the, the foundation. So I-
You've got to be careful around foundations.
We need to be sensitive to that.
But I think the soils test would help us understand that, yeah.
So just one clarification for me. If the council's inclined to strike section D, and if we leave the language concerning trees in A, B, and C, then as it would be written, they still would have to put in a tree. They'd just put in whatever they'd want, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I would, I, I, this is, this is just me speaking, so I, and some nods would help, but I, I would say we strike D, but within the next couple of months, I, I would like to see us work with the public on, on maybe a, a more comprehensive, you know, street tree plan ordinance of some sort. I, I know with our staff, we have a lot of expertise there. I know there's some willingness from some of the builders I've talked to as well, that, that is a good thing, a good investment. We need to make mow strips great again, so if that's a, an adjustment to our standards, that, that was a dry joke, by the way, but, you know, if we need to adjust our standards to allow some offset of sidewalks to do that, or, anyway, those are discussions I would like to have sooner than later. But, so that being said, I, I think we're totally fine to strike D for now.
Everybody else want to strike D?
Sure.
Everybody okay with striking D?
Yeah, because I don't want the city council approving what trees they should plant.
We're gonna-
I don't, I don't, I don't want to be in that business.
So strike D, add simple landscape plan, correct?
Yeah. You want the language added about depending on soil's condition for the percentage of-
Yeah, and delete the color renderings.
So, how do we administer on the soil's conditions? Would they, would that be in a soils report, Don, to say, probably not a good idea to plant grass here?
That's, that's my understanding. Yep. Okay, next slide, Jonathan?
So, so should we approve K1 with those changes?
We're just doing the nods.
We're doing the nods so they can clean it up.
We're not doing any proposals tonight on the table, clearly, so, okay.
Doesn't mean those nods can change.
Right. Nods can always change.
Okay, so moving on to parking. The suggestion here is to push the parking lots for these multifamily developments towards the rear of the building, or the sides of the building. This is purely an aesthetic issue. If a building's at 15 foot, you're typically not going to have the parking in the front anyways. But the idea is, this is an aesthetic concern, is to keep the vehicles off that front if they do decide to set it back, and just avoid a commercial look, keep it in line with the residential. That's, that's the intent here. It's as simple as that.
Do we have a bunch of nods for that?
Yeah, I don't have-
Yeah, I don't have issues with this one.
Mayor? Yes? You have a gentleman in the back that would like to make a comment, if you'd like to consider it.
Spencer Jones at Citylet.
Way to go, Spencer.
Yeah.
Broke our microphone.
Yeah. Let me comment on this. For the record, it was talked about in the last meeting, just so I'm not scaring everyone. I did have COVID. It was brought up in the last meeting. I've been through quarantine, so if anyone's, and I do have the antibody now, so no one's going to get anything from me tonight. As far as number 2A, just kind of concerned a little bit about this, because I know in the past, about two years ago when the SHD was originated, there was a lot of discussion of trying to get the, the parking off of the road and, and so forth. So a lot of the SHD that's happened, the parking has went in the rear, the buildings have went up front. As you can see, the, the parking really has been removed off of the street. There's language in here later on that you'll talk about, that some of the earlier drafts had the word "primary," a primary entrance, that you would want to, to have in the front of the building, again, to give it that sense of entrance. That's a little bit different than kind of the direction that everyone was trying to go initially of getting everyone in, in the back and, and not out on the street, but that's for discussion here in a minute. But the concern here of having the, of not allowing parking between the building and the street is just a little bit concerning, because the 15-foot setback, that, that's a minimum setback. And so you may be, because of an easement or an overhead power line, a lot of, if you look and you drive the streets, which I know many of you have driven the streets throughout the SHD, a lot of the power lines are overhead, and because of the size of lines, the power company has been unwilling thus far to put those underground. And so depending upon the size of the project, you could conceivably have the power lines go through the middle. So if it's a larger project, multiple lots, and they go from one street to another all the way through, that, that easement itself could, could really dictate where the building goes, especially a larger building and the shape of the building. And, and so I just want the council to, to think that there may be projects that are proposed that aren't going to be right up tight to that 15-foot minimum setback in order to work. And so if that's the case, if, if that building is setback a third of the way back into the lot, or because of other constraints, that, that could, that could really kill a project. And so I think, you know, the intent is, is that a majority of the parking is away from the street, is on the other side, but, but I, I'm just really concerned about projects that I'm aware of, multiple projects that, that are well in their way in design, or, or pretty well completed what they're designed, but because of either lumber prices right now being over 300% or because of COVID, that they haven't been submitted to the city yet, but, but are pretty imminently, you know, moving forward, a few hundred thousand dollars in design, those kind of things like that, that, that it would kill the project by not allowing any parking between the street and the building. So I just wanted to bring that up.
So, just to clarify, I, I just have a clarifying question. So would your proposal then be to, so within this parking language on, on A, for example, if, if you basically, you know, if you kept the, you know, no parking within a setback adjacent to a street, but, but struck the, that first part of that provision, is, is that kind of what you're alluding to? Is that, that first part of that provision is, is depending on power line utilities or whatever it may be prohibitive?
Yeah.
But, but that second part doesn't have any issue?
Yes, and, and thanks for bringing that up. I, I think, I think, and I apologize I didn't bring this up before. I'm the chair of the Government Affairs Committee for the Home Builders, and so Ryan spoke last time, and he may speak later today, I don't know, but, so I'm here with the association, Home Builders Association, so I'm, I'm talking in behalf of, of a large group here. I think having language in there about, you know, no parking in, in the setbacks, I think would be fine. So that first 15 feet or, you know, whatever that is, absolutely not a problem. But, but it is the, the prior language, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So then my, I guess my question for other council members would be, what are, what are your thoughts on that? Is, is that, you know, for aesthetic or other reasons, are we, do we, I, I, I understand for practical reasons and a lot of other things, you know, a lot of these projects are just naturally going to be right at that front setback, but is that something that we, or is that a hard and fast rule, or what's the goal? I tend to not mind that stuff as much, I think.
For me, and again, I guess it comes back to the aesthetics, but I'm looking at the neighborhoods. I'm looking to see, how does this building, whatever it might happen to be, the design, how does it harmonize with the buildings surrounding it? The, the house next door, the house with the apartment across the street, you know, to make sure that it still has some sense of harmony with the existing neighborhood.
Right. And I get that. I, I, you know, I, I, there's not as much charm or marketability in a property that's 100 feet, you know, hidden behind 100 feet of asphalt and cars either, so I, I think there's a, to some extent, there is a, yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm inclined to, to strike that requirement as well, unless we have the appetite to build in exceptions for public utility easements and things like that, that, because, because we don't want to render property without value just because of where, where the power company does its power lines, but-
I don't understand what you mean by the first part of the provision. Can you-
Oh, sorry, sorry, yeah, this, so, so in 2A, where it says, no onsite parking or drive aisles allowed between the building and street sidewalk, so-
What you're talking about.
Yeah, so if we were to strike that and leave, but, you know, that, still, that there would be no onsite parking or drive aisles within any setback adjacent to a street. I'm, I'm totally fine with keeping that. I think just about everybody's okay with that, but, so if we were to take out, like, the middle of that provision, I, I'd be inclined to either take that out or build in some exception for public utilities, but I, I think that's more hassle than it's worth, so.
So are we just saying no parking in the first?
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying. Sorry, that's, that's what I'm saying. Unless someone wants to make an argument for building in the exception.
Maybe I could offer a compromise if that was, if that was to be struck. We shift the, shift the thought to letter B there, where it talks about if that 15-foot were to remain, you landscape it, you can use low-level walls, berms, things like, things like that to soften up the look of that parking lot.
Oh, I see. So you, so if, to, to clarify, it takes me a minute, because I, I don't build things. So, so you're saying if, if they don't, if, if, if they're going to build parking between the street and the building, that the, that then the letter B, we'd basically treat it as, as if it was a drive-through?
Through lot, yes.
Yeah, I'm, or, yeah, through lot. I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't know how you do that with the words.
Are we saying no parking in the 15-foot setback, but if you have parking after the 15-foot setback and before the building, then you got to screen it with the shrubs and bushes and-
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
Yeah.
That's what we're saying?
Yes, that's the suggestion.
Sorry, yeah, so, there, so, sorry, it looks like there's a hand, too. So, so again, this is the, basically, regardless, you're going to be landscaping the, that 15-foot setback. You're not going to be parking in a setback anyway. It's just a question of, if you're building as farther back, maybe there's a little more ask of you as far as the, we're, we're going to treat it as if it's a through lot aesthetically.
The, the idea would be to soften that parking lot. It does become a little subjective as well, but-
Spencer, did you have some comments on that, or?
Sorry, I keep coming up. I, I actually just, because I'm trying to think of several different projects here within the association. So there, there's one project-
Say your name again, will you, please?
Yes, Spencer Jones. So there is one that, that would have the parking in that 15 feet, and there's, what, what I'm wondering is if the, the council would consider this. And that would be that if there was parking in that setback, in that front setback, that there, there would be a requirement to have down, if you look at 2B, down there, the second line, low-level walls, berms, hedges, or trees. So it would, it would accomplish that same thing, so that there is that barrier, you know, between, between the parking and the street.
But what would that be? Two feet? Three feet?
Uh-
If it's in that 15-foot setback, what is it?
Yeah, so you're, you're saying the parking is in the 15 feet, so-
There, there is one proj, I, what I had mentioned to you before, that, you know, it'd probably be okay. There, there is one project that I did forget about, and so that is my fault here, mendigo. But, but it, yes, that the parking is designed in the front set, you know, 15 feet, less than 15 feet from the road.
Hmm. And I'm not sure even under the current, current ordinance if that's permitted, is it?
No, it's not.
No, you can't park in there.
So if, we're not going to be able to write an ordinance that-
Well, we shouldn't do it for one development.
Right, right, right.
But if we're, if we're going that way, then why even have any of this language? Just say parking can be in the front, you just have to screen it.
No, I don't think we should do that.
If you look at, like, commercial-
If that's the way the council wants to go, if that's what we're saying.
If you look at, like, commercial, for an example, there's not necessarily a requirement to have, you know, the screening or the, the walls or berms or so forth, but a lot of the commercial does have that between the street and the parking. It'll have hedges and things. And so I, I, I can definitely see where the concern is and the reason why this is being brought up. And, and I think if, if the council wanted to put all of that other language, walls, berms, hedges, trees, and you could maybe even make it a little more rigid, that it has to be a wall or a berm and hedges and trees. So it's not, you know, any of those, but it has to be a wall, a berm, and hedges or trees, something like that, so that there is that, that barrier. So, anyways, thank you.
I think, and, and I'm, I'm trying to understand, so that, one of the reasons we have the 15-foot setback in the front is to ensure fire access and stuff like that, too, right? So I don't know, it's-
It's part of how that 15-foot setback was developed in the SHD zone, is to give the fire department room to work.
Yeah, it was, it was to bring that building forward, is my understanding, so they have access to those taller structures.
Right.
So it gets kind of, if, if that's the rationale, so the fire department can get from the curb over to the FDC caps on the building, and then we put a bunch of cars in the middle of them in that 15-foot, Mike and his guys are going to go through with axes and break windows and string those through cars.
Mm-hmm.
It's the practical, he's nodding his head and smiling.
You end up having a parking lot, a parking lot in the front of a building on a residential street.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I guess in my mind, I'm, I'm still, you know, that little middle section of A, I'm okay with striking that because I don't think it flies in the face of what we're trying to do here. Otherwise, I'm inclined, at least for now, to, you know, as far as the nods and the staff instruction on drafting to leave the rest of this as is, you know, look into that issue a little more, see if it creates absurd results or something. But I, I'm okay with it as is.
So if I, just so I make sure I've got the right middle portion struck. So it just reads, "Building shall be orientated towards the public street with no onsite parking," or?
No.
No, with?
No.
With, just ended street, ended street, period?
Um, sorry, oh, oh, like as far as what I was trying to say?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we're, "Building shall be oriented toward the public, public street," or sorry. Building, yeah, "Shall be oriented toward the public street."
With no onsite?
With no onsite parking or drive aisles within any setback adjacent to a street. So from aisles to nor.
This might be a dumb question, but what's a drive aisle? If you're pulling off the street and you're driving through that setback to get to the parking in the rear, isn't that a drive aisle? So we're saying you can't even access this project from the public street?
Between the building and the street.
So you're saying parallel to the building and the street?
Yeah, if you're, yeah, that's the way I read it.
Yeah, me too.
So I just had a question, Lauren Henderson? So there is a project over on 300 that has a drive aisle between the two buildings. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it would, it.
There's two, there's two structures, but there's a drive, I call it a driveway, but that comes right between the two structures.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that. It'd be anything between the building and the street. Yeah, so I think the goal is to minimize asphalt and parking in front of the building because we want, by having the shorter setback in the front, we want the building closer to the street, unimpeded, so fire trucks can get kids out of there and, you know.
I'm just hoping that, and I know the.
Light their toaster on fire or whatever.
Right, so, right. Well, and I appreciate that the council is mindful that this is still a residential area primarily with single family homeowners, so whatever happens in here, we're all living around it. I'm in the SHD zone, so I'm hoping that we're, we're working in concert with the Home Builders Association and realizing that there are single family homes in this area. They didn't just disappear because we've deemed it the SHD zone.
No, I think we're all trying to keep that in mind.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So are we moving on?
I think we've got direction, yeah. Okay, screening. This is purely aesthetic, address the screening of mechanical, excuse me, mechanical equipment and the location of trash enclosures. It should be noted, there was a change here that previously the ordinance had suggested conduits be installed on the interior of the building. Realizing those practical difficulties, the change was that conduits mounted on the exterior shall be finished to match the building. So that could be with flashing paint, running it on the inside. That's the only change there.
With the changes, I don't have any issues with these changes to this section.
Only 35 more slides to go. Okay, now we get into the weeds a little bit more. So this is, this is architecture. And keep in mind, these are generally designed to push against a box, the beige box, so to speak. So, so what it requires is 20% of the building wall length. Well, the first one, I know is a bone of contention. It's, "The building shall not have a total measurement greater than 100 linear feet along any wall." There are buildings certainly out there that are much longer than 100 feet. But the offsets is that 20% of that facade would be offset. You know, Founder's Hall is a great example. It's got articulation all over it.
Can you just clarify that 100 foot, then? Is that just 100 linear foot? That's not the length of the building because the building can be larger than that, correct?
The thought on that was, in a residential area, if you're going to have more housing, that you would break those buildings up and not have the long linear box. That's, that was the thought on that. So no, it would be.
Is that saying your, your building has to be less than 100 feet? Or you got to go, if you go 100 feet, you have to do an articulation and then you can keep going?
Yes, the intent was that you'd break that building into separate structures.
Yeah, and I, as we go through, I know with, I think it's like A, B, C, D, and G, and maybe a few others, we'll see. But I'm, I'm okay encouraging these. With Dawn, we went over a number of the projects in the SHD zone that have been built in the last, I don't know, five years, probably 10 years even. And most, I think the vast majority would be compliant with almost all of them. But I just get a little heartburn when we get, you know, we're pinning the tail on the donkey and we can't quite see where that donkey should be. So I, I just, I get a little more heartburn with these. I'm totally fine with encouraging them. I know with, especially these two, and we'll keep going, but I have a harder time requiring these ones.
I would agree with that. I think we would encourage them to maybe break it up, but I think if you had some kind of articulation where the building kept going. I don't know, what do you guys think?
I mean, it could be, it could be a 300 foot building, but it could be broken up enough with compliance with all of these other, with roof changes and entrances and other things that I don't think it would be offensive, but.
Though we want to encourage them to do that. Is that what you're saying, Councilman?
Yeah, I would say encourage rather than require on that.
Is that on the 100?
That's the first line, right?
Is on the 100 linear foot provision as encouraged?
On pretty, are you saying pretty much everything under this subsection A? Or just the 100 feet? Well, that's the.
All right. I think it should be in the ordinance.
I think it should be in there.
Yeah, I think if we put it in the ordinance though, we could, we could maybe subdivide it. Depending on how the other things go, I think we could have, you know, required architecture and then, you know, encouraged architecture. Just so it's clearly delineated that, you know, here's your minimum requirements, but we, this, this represents kind of the breaking up of the mass thing. It's in, you know, the feel. And like you said, I think just about every project within the zone, now there have been some that went up outside of the zone that do look horribly ugly, but they're not going to be governed by this ordinance anyway.
Can I ask a question? I'm a developer and I come in and I see these encouraged standards, and I ask staff, "Okay, you want to encourage that, what are you going to give me to encourage me to do it?"
Nothing. A smile.
Just your goodwill that the city wants you to do this because you're building in our community?
And I think, in a lot of ways, the market is.
Because I'm concerned if we put shall on there, it'll never get passed by this council. But I think that we have to encourage people to do this. It doesn't mean they have to do it, but I think we need to encourage them and say, "This is important to us."
No, I agree with that. I'm, I'm, and like you said, you know, the market, without being told to, the market's already created buildings that meet this. I worry though, when we have stuff like this, is we, if you're given parameters and you're trying to design around those parameters, it gets a little wonky. Whereas let's let people design and then use those parameters for references. Oh, am I getting close to where we're looking? And I understand there are some things we want to require. I don't think this should be it.
So in section 4A, we're going to encourage the 100 foot rule. Is the rest of that section under 4A on this slide, is that a requirement or an encouragement?
An encouragement.
That's, that's how I feel about all of 4A.
The whole paragraph is encouraged?
Yep.
All of it. I think it's the same thing on B.
Now, we have G on here too, is it because it's related to A?
I think that's what I did. Trying to keep them together, yes.
Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead of your PowerPoint. Excuse me.
So G was encouraged too?
Uh, well, this, yeah, this is a different one, but, so we didn't talk about specifically that. On my personal notes, I made this an encourage. I don't want to make that one a requirement either.
Okay, John, let's, let's skip through these drawings, if you don't mind. Okay, this is the same type of parameters, it's just talking about roof lines.
This is an encourage also, in my opinion.
Me too. I, um. I, I think in some ways it's the. I think in some ways it's the enforceability.
I am, but I don't think anybody else is. That's why I say I'll go with encourage, rather than lose it completely.
I, yeah, and where I, where I'm at with B is, I get what the ordinance is trying to do, but.
This is, John, just flip one back, just for the record.
I get what this is trying to do, but in, you know, this is something I would expect to see in like HOA covenants. In a city ordinance, I get, you know, especially where in our Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference, what was that, two months ago? The theme was, "Housing's expensive throughout the state and cities, it's your fault. You're redlining through design standards. You're telling people of, you know, you must make at least X amount of money to live here in cities, that's not okay." And so I do, we want to maintain certain standards to maintain, you know, quality of life expectations. But I think especially like with this one where it's purely aesthetic, I, I would like to see it encouraged. I don't want to see it required.
All right, so entrances.
Right, I, yeah.
They are similar. Looking at D in hindsight, I think it's completely overwritten. You could almost do that in one sentence. Change that to three feet, projections or recesses of three feet, depending on the, depending on council's pleasure. So I don't know if this is an encourage or?
Yeah, yeah, I would put these in the encourage category. We're almost through.
Okay, so projections, as it ended up in your packet, goes back and references the existing ordinance. I had rewritten this and I did not give it to Tyler, this is my fault. But the second part is the way I rewrote it. This talks about projections, which are typically architectural, not living space. We're going with three feet, 12 feet from the street side, obviously 10 feet from the street property line, and obviously not in any public utility easement. So this is just guidance on those architectural features. And then if you go to the next slide, John, this was a suggestion here from Tyler.
Are you guys okay with the projections? The way the rewrite or the pre?
Yeah, the, I think the rewrite, I liked the rewrite. So are you saying the underlying stuff is your rewrite?
That was the rewrite. The above paragraph was in your packet. And I just think, because this area is unique, we don't want to reference back to something that doesn't make sense. And then Mr. Milling, the next slide was the language that you had suggested.
Right, and.
That's in red.
And the, and the goal there, they, yeah, so the red, brown, that was, I guess to clarify a couple of things, but the way it's been rewritten, I'm, anyway, I'm, my goal was to encourage projections with a carrot instead of a stick. So you can, you can expand the interior square footage of a projection as long as it's not sticking out, you know, farther than that 12 foot line. And so long as that projection is not on the ground floor, so you still have all the grounds access. But anyway, I think that was more just my attempt to, you know, to encourage projections rather than setting a whole building back because of the setbacks. And I think, Dawn, you got, you pretty much got there in the revision, so.
Yeah, you certainly want to encourage the articulation of that building, so there's no intent to discourage that.
And so in, now, so in this revision with the projections, are we, are we saying then that the, this 12 feet, so that can be occupied interior space then, as part of the projection under the revision?
That is the way you drafted it.
Sorry, I meant in yours. Oh, okay. I know, I've, I'd need to, I guess it takes some more time to look at it, to digest it before I could even nod. But that, that would be my goal, is to encourage projections by allowing it into the setback a little bit, rather than requiring setbacks, or, sorry, requiring projections. So my nod is toward that, but I'd have to read it a little more closely to.
Does the rest of the council want to see Dawn's revision and move it along?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is this a requirement?
Use the revision language that you wrote on the previous slide.
Okay, moving on, getting towards the end here. Access, again, this is purely a design consideration. The idea is to get your entrances towards the front of the street. Make the buildings look more like a residential project, not the rear of a project. And if we're going to have entrance corridors of second, third, fourth stories, that they be done from the interior. Again, this is an aesthetic. This is an example of what would not be permitted, kind of a hotel, no knock to our hotels and motels, but if this was a, something the developer wanted to do as written, this would be on the rear of the building.
Right, or on the side, just not the one that's facing the street, right?
Not the street side, yes.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with requiring this one.
I am.
Oh, I've got another.
Okay, lighting, this was discussed. I know there were some concerns about how this was written. "But the placement of exterior lights shall let direct light on two adjacent residential properties or lots and shall be installed in such manner that light source will be sufficiently obscured or shielded." I don't know if I hit those concerns from staff as far as creating.
I just hear the arguments that.
Creating a nuisance, a nuisance issue, right.
Yeah, and it's, their lights are nuisance and we go through it and we look at the lights and they're all down shielded. And even though they're all down shielded, yeah, you can still see the light from, from a couple lots over.
And that's, that's always the case.
It's a light. I just, I was just looking for something really clear for staff to be able to say, if it's shielded down, leave it alone.
That, that makes sense to me too. We could say exterior lighting shall be down shielded with that.
So, so Paul, that, what you're saying is that this as written is not, does not quite get to that level of clarity that staff's looking for?
And I think I agree, but we can simplify it. If it's got a down shield, we're good.
There you go. I would nod to that.
Next is building materials. "All building materials shall incorporate at least two primary building materials as part of the exterior facade and a prohibition against mirrored glazing is a primary consideration."
I'm fine with this.
I'm fine with requiring this one.
What's mirrored glazing?
That would be your building, like a skyscraper that's glass and.
Just a glass front?
Yeah, very modern.
Is that, does that count?
No.
It is mirrored glazing, but it's not the, it's not the whole building.
Okay.
All right.
He's going to cover it because this is, I see you saved this for last, huh?
Uh, yes, I have no comments. Uh, yes. I have no comments.
I'm, I, I do, the last sentence, I, I'm okay requiring three colors. Um, we are, uh, yeah, I, I'm okay requiring three colors. I don't want to get into what those colors should be. Even if they're varying shades of gray or...
I'm fine with that.
Black or white or...
I think that is at least a step.
Um, and there is a section in the beginning when it talks about plans, it says color rendering. So we can, we can strike that.
Okay.
Is that...
So, do, do we want to require the three colors and just stay out of the selection business or...
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, at least. I, I think at least.
But design should, design should have at least three colors and it should. I'm a nod.
All right, uh, last... So, this is, this is the last one. Councilmember, uh, Milling, this is one of your questions. I'll, I'll let you take the reins on this.
Sure, um, I'm, I'm just trying to think, uh, maybe, yeah, what else? Can I stand up and address the council? Is that okay? I think that's okay. I want to use the laser pointer. Yeah, that's okay. I'm going to do it.
And that the following slide is a map.
Which one's the, the button? Okay, so, um...
Your name.
Yes, Tyler Milling, City Council. So we, we have, um, anyway, I, I've been working on this for about a year and a half just in talking to residents, developers, students. Um, I think something like this could really help in the area and encourage development toward those busiest streets rather than into the neighborhoods. Um, and I like using carrots and not sticks, uh, when we can. Uh, so, um, you know, this, this was, uh, this is not necessarily, I'm, I'm not married to this language up here, but, uh, the goal is, is to kind of look at some of this. This has been edited from last week to, um, to delineate. Uh, so we have this, Highway 56 is its own animal, but, but all these other areas, so kind of the, you know, 200 South, um, Center Street, 300 West, 800 West, um, that these would be, uh, areas where you could build commercial spaces within, uh, commercial, or, sorry, residential dorm developments. Uh, so it can't be more than 25% of the total indoor space, right? So you're pretty much limiting it to ground floor, four stories or, uh, or if it's going to be shorter than that, even less, uh, than the ground floor being commercial. Um, there are some little signage requirements just so you're not getting into, uh, basically it, it comply with our other sign ordinances. And then, uh, so in, from some of the feedback last week, um, the, I added these, this three and four and I'm open to input, obviously, but, um, so I took this language from our downtown commercial ordinance. And so the goal here is to not encourage it between three and four to, to discourage the types of businesses that are destination businesses that want a ton of parking in the front or a drive-through or something like that. This is, uh, we're, we're going to want, without, without explicitly discouraging, um, uh, you know, the uses, um, we're, we're, for a practical matter, we kind of are. Um, so if someone wants to put a little cafe, pizza place, whatever, that's going to be in the ground floor, little grocery store, uh, anything like that, um, they're not, they'll still have parking in the back, but they're not going to have parking facing the street. Um, they, uh, so there's, there's no minimum front setback there. Um, and then, uh, Highway 56, I think, is a totally different animal. And another thing, you know, we, I think we want to see development along Highway 56. And if there is a place in town for 50-foot, uh, buildings in SHD, this would be it. I realize within our overlay, there are only a couple parcels right now that this would affect, but I think we need to contemplate it in the ordinance. And so my, what I tried to do here is basically we're not, we're not going to set Highway 56 stuff along the, uh, with, with setback rules, the design criteria or any of these other commercial space restrictions. Uh, so basically they can develop so long as the grounds and ground level of the business meet highway service or central commercial zone requirements, they're good. But then they can also build the residences above, uh, to SHD specifications with SHD parking and things like that. And I realize we may revisit parking anyway, but this is just a way to, again, to encourage the development along those busier streets, um, before we see too much encroachment into the neighborhoods. So, um, I'd like some feedback on these provisions. I, I did send them to council and I, so they are now public record to Tyler. So they're public record, but, uh, so I sent these revisions, so I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them or have any thoughts on some of these.
May I ask a question?
Uh-huh.
So in 1B, it says the commercial space does not occupy more than 25% of the total indoor space of the building. Is that just all floors of the building?
Right, total indoor space, right. So that would be all floors.
So if you have a five-story building...
In theory, yeah.
Five-story building, the whole bottom can be commercial.
Right. If you have, if you have five stories, if, if you want to put, uh, oh, man, now I have to do math. Five-story, four, uh, what is that, a quarter? Yeah, if you want to put a quarter of the second floor as office space, and you think you can sell that, I guess, power to you. Um, but, uh, you know, the, the goal is to keep this primarily residential.
Well, isn't the intent to keep it primarily on the ground level, the commercial?
Right, right. Primarily residential uses for buildings, but then also, yeah, primarily. So, uh, part of that too is so you can't just build a standalone business in this residential area. It's, it's got to be overwhelmingly residential by square footage.
What was your intent when you wrote, "Commercial uses in a development shall not affect the residential parking requirements"?
Is that in number two here?
Yeah.
Oh, right, so, so just because it happens to have commercial use that, and, and again, I could use some help maybe from staff on this. But the goal here was, uh, uh, commercial uses in the development. Basically, just because you happen to have commercial space doesn't change your residential parking ratios. And so the...
Is it trying to limit so we don't require commercial parking?
No, no, no. So, so we can still require the commercial parking, but it doesn't change the residential parking requirements.
Point seven-five.
Right, so, so you're still doing the point seven-five per unit, per bedroom, however we calculate that. Uh, but then the, the commercial is treated separately. And so you'd, you'd also have to provide those spaces.
The 1.3 or whatever it is.
Whatever it is, how, yeah.
I have a question about what your, what your thoughts were on the number three to not require minimum front setbacks for those buildings.
Right, so, um, again, these are kind of the, the streets that are facing campus. And so the goal was to create, uh, this language was taken from our downtown commercial ordinance. Uh, so we're downtown, we don't have parking spaces in between the street and the buildings. And that would be the goal is to, is to emulate that if they want to do that. Otherwise, they, you know, they can still set it back if they want to, um, subject to all of our other parking, uh, restrictions. So they, they can't put parking in that setback and everything else. But, um, but the goal was to, because it is next to campus, if someone thinks that, um, they can kind of create that, uh, commercial strip, um, I don't see why not to if it's still 75% residential space and, and facing campus.
Councilman, I, I don't have the SHD map right here handy, but I'm assuming, uh, when you say down to 1150 West on, uh, A1, um, does it, I know it jots in and out at places, but I, I wasn't, I didn't think we went all the way down to 1150 on the...
Yeah, and, and again, so these exact boundaries, I'm not totally married to, but, uh, uh, so 200, oh, there we go, yep. So this is 1150 right here. Uh, so you have your, um, this is very helpful.
So again, this isn't the zone.
Right, this isn't...
This is the, this is the master plan designation. So I think what he's done is taken those corridors right along the university and, and said this, this is where we want the commercial, right?
Right, if, if they want to do it.
But I, I wouldn't want to vote for that not knowing exactly where the SHD zone sits.
Right.
Because I know we had some neighbors that came down on 800 and 1150, different things that were, and, and in those are one areas we didn't include it.
Right, and, and this, you know, if, I don't know if, if council would feel better if we moved, you know, this, this south line back to here, um, to 800 or likewise with Center Street if, you know, if we, uh, better defined those parameters. But I, uh, again, the goal is to kind of identify those busiest streets and permit it along there, right? I know there was one, uh, development that went up where they wanted to put something in there and there was just simply no room in the ordinance. And I, and I think that's a shame because it really would, would have been a benefit to the area, not a detriment.
A copy center, a little coffee shop or something, sure. I just think we have to more clearly define those areas. I think it's a little vague right now for me.
So...
So if there's not, if there's not some consensus on this language, do you want us to run this back as a future amendment? A standalone, or do you want to keep it moving with the main amendment that we're bringing next week?
Well, and...
I don't know if any of this went through planning commission.
Right, it didn't, and, and that's what I, I checked, um, because I have these drafts sent to staff, uh, I think shortly after sketch review. Um, and, uh, it didn't get onto the planning commission agenda. I checked on, you know, legally, we're still good. And I think between the, the different, uh, you know, from a PR perspective, uh, there, there is that concern, but I think, I, I know I've been very transparent for, you know, since before I was on the council, that I think we need to see something like this. I, these rough terms have been circulating for six months. I, um, uh, so I'm okay with proposing this. I guess, other than more clearly defining those sections, um, as far as the general idea and some of these guidelines, is there any other feedback from council as far as where we want to?
This, this clearly is in the spirit of the SHD. I mean, developing commercial in there makes all kinds of sense. I'm not sure I'm ready to pull the trigger on it. And, and I would ask council whether we do need to run this through the planning commission before, because everything else has been, uh, given a positive recommendation by the planning commission.
Well, and it puts residents on alert as it goes through there.
So, so I think this, this takes a sidetrack. I mean, it can be done in the very next planning commission meeting and, and we can move it through quickly. But I, but I don't think this can be part of the revision that we'll be voting on.
Now, and, and so as far as staff, um, so if we put this through the process, I mean, what's our timeline there, um, with noticing and stuff like that? Oh, I see, okay. So, and, and so as far as noticing to residents, what's that period?
There's, so there's no, there's no requirement that we go door to door and notice every residence. It's a public hearing.
Oh, I see.
We would publish a notice in the paper, the public hearing for proposed zone change, the same process we did for the rest of these changes.
I see.
And that would, and again, council doesn't meet until January two or three, whichever day it is, so we have...
No, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, uh...
Just a sketch meeting is one.
I don't know why we would need to take it to sketch meeting. So, may I ask a question in section M? There's a whole bunch of code sites in there. With the changes we're making to the main body of the code.
Right, that, that this would refer to those. Yeah, so I was, I was revering off of, off of the number eight item in our packet in making these. And so, yeah, those would likely need to be revisited depending on how we number the statute.
Yep, yes.
Make a motion to table this particular agenda item until next week.
Second. Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Councilman Eisen.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to item number nine. Consider an ordinance amending chapter 32 of the city's ordinance as dealing with planned unit developments. Maybe you've reached your limit, Don.
Maybe, maybe. It's a sign. Can you hear me? I don't know if it, is it working?
Yeah.
Is it?
Don't touch it.
Okay.
Just don't touch it.
All right, so the PUD ordinance changes. So as we know, some, uh, some time ago, TASS was, uh, charged with making changes to the development standards associated with the PUD, uh, development standards. Concerns at that time related to parking, access, open space, pedestrian, pedestrian access. Um, so there was some, there are some changes in this ordinance, and I'm sure you've seen in your packet, uh, starting with the minimum size for planned unit, excuse me, planned unit developments. Uh, so in discussions with staff, you know, the original thought was we wanted these to be large enough that, uh, HOA is big enough to maintain those private improvements. We do have a number of, uh, small PUDs, uh, certainly gives ownership opportunities. So in this rendition in front of you, that was struck. The, there's a couple of edits here that we added here today. That, uh, residential planned unit developments, this is 38, uh, 3884. Residential planned unit development shall meet the minimum lot area, scratch density and adding lot size and dimensional requirements. There's no minimum density, so we just wanted to clear that language up.
For the underlying zone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I should stand over here.
You also suggest adding a definition. As you read through the ordinance, you will see primary access road or route or street reference. We wanted to add a definition to clear that. That's an accessway within a PUD development required for fire access or trash collection by SIR city.
Why are we adding that?
I'll get to that. Um, if, when you read through the standards, it talks about, um, 26-foot minimum excluding curb gutter and sidewalk for the streets. And it's referenced as primary, so we wanted to make sure that that was for the fire access routes. And then we have secondary listed, where those could be the 24-foot roads still. Um, so we just wanted to clarify that those roads that need to be 26 feet wide are the primary entrances and primary accesses. Does that make sense or...
I mean, is it a problem?
Uh, it was something we were discussing. We just wanted to be clear that those were the, those were the roads where that 26-foot, uh, wide or 26-foot width is required. Uh, because we also referenced secondary roads. And those can still be at that 24-foot width. So maybe it's an alleyway, it's going to the rear of a garage. But those primary access roads were, uh, life safety is a concern. We just wanted to, to define that.
I just don't get it. If there's not a problem, why are we, what are we fixing?
Well, the, the, the idea was to make sure that it was clear that the roads are 26-foot wide of pavement.
I understand that.
Right, with, with the exclusion of the curb gutter sidewalk. Uh, but in the ordinance, it stipulates that not all roads have to, or accessways have to be that wide. So we were just trying to, to differentiate that in the ordinance.
You're saying it's something that wasn't there.
That's, that was, that. That might.
That is the suggestion, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so, just as an example, maybe I can be a little bit more clear, if you go through the ordinance, um. Get to the right section here. So after landscaping, for example, you'll see parking, and it says within a residential planned unit development, where the street design does not allow for street parking either due to nervous or vehicular access, uh, it talks about guest parking, so we wanted to make sure that that was referenced as that pri, if the primary access road, so that would be the main road doesn't have street parking, then that's where the guest parking ratio would take effect, so that's, that's an example. Um, another example, we say private parking spaces designated for private use and located on the front of a unit, uh, I'm sorry. If you move down to letter I.
Letter I where? What step we on? Tell me where we are.
We just had a page. J parking?
If you go under parking, uh, dimensions, and it talks about private, non-dedicated streets.
Parking.
It's actually letter L. Says the minimum street width shall be twenty-six feet. So we're trying to stipulate that, that is the primary access road, needs to be twenty-six feet, so that's.
So, when you went through all this, did you go through the fire department and see if they were okay with parking on the secondary roads?
Um, I don't know if I, I don't.
I'm probably pretty sure they don't want cars on any of the roads.
Right, and that's, it would still, there would be no parking on those roads, uh, because they're too narrow, so.
In fact, isn't there a provision that says no parking on a street of less than?
Thirty feet, thirty feet of pavement width, yes.
And that would be in the covenants too, I think, as a requirement.
That's correct.
Gee, that makes sense.
Did I clarify that, or am I still missing, uh, missing the ball here? Uh, anyways, Jonathan, if you wanna move on, I'll just cover, uh, like, the first issue of discussion was common open space, uh, this is virtually the same as your last packet, there was a lot of discussion what that magic number is, uh, we had it at two fifty, I've shown one fifty at this point with a maximum requirement of three percent. Um, so that would be exclusive of your setbacks unless those setbacks are open and accessible, so a lot of the PUDs have the, the dwellings arranged around those setbacks, and those are private backyards, uh, typically, so, but if those setbacks are open, you could use those spaces, uh, to achieve your open space requirement.
Okay.
Um, and just a quick example, as far as those open space, uh, open spaces go, you know, some of the ones that you've seen, um, Victoria Arbers, ten units, it'd be a minimum of at least seven hundred and fifty-six square feet, uh, I call it Blackstone Three, I know the name, I know the name changed, that would be forty-eight hundred square feet, so that's an example of how those ratios go, um, a large PUD, sixty-six units, that'd be seven thousand, seven hundred and change, almost the size of a single-family lot, so that's, that's the suggestion on open space.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Uh, there's a provision that says, uh, that, that that open space has to be provided as each phase is completed, and I'm just afraid if we require that, that we shortchange our, the development on a, maybe a bigger, uh, more, what's the word I'm looking for? More usable space, if I've got to come up with three percent out of every phase, uh, in open space, but I can dedicate a, a corner of the whole development, uh, for open space and other things, I wouldn't want to preclude that from happening, you, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
I just hate to see.
So you're saying that it should come off of the master planned development?
Yeah, and, and even a commitment, right?
Uh huh.
Well, it, it does go, it does go on to say any singular area designated as common open shall contain a minimum of one-half of the required, is that one-half of just that phase, or is that one-half of the development?
It would be the requirement per phase as it's written.
Okay.
So that'd be one and a half percent, basically.
Right.
But see, once again, I think those are real small spaces.
So, is there an option, I'd, and I can't remember if, I, in talking to staff or, um, community stakeholders, that there, there's kind of an idea that, uh, you know, because of the nature of phase building and things like that, that maybe we could, you know, if you have a, say, a three-phase development, and, uh, your plan for the common area is in phase two, uh, could we allow them to do phase one, uh, but then not release the bond on that open space until they, uh, do phase two, is, is that a possibility, or, or not really?
Have a bond on the open space, if it's included in phase one, they wouldn't bond for it.
Sorry, that's, that's what I mean, is, is, uh, let's, let's say, for example, we, we put a, a value of the, uh, you know, in the, in the, uh, estimates or whatever, you know, you, you have a value of the open space requirement for phase one, and they can bond for that, and that's not released till they build it in phase two, does that make sense? Is that, is something like that a possibility? Because, because I, I think what Councilman Isom said is, you know, brings up a good point, is we don't want to create these absurd, uh, spots that really, they, they just don't make sense other than to fulfill a requirement when they're gonna do something nice anyway later, um, I know that it doesn't always pan out, uh, people go belly up, markets change, uh, but could we bond for the value of that open space if they don't finish the future phase?
What we've done with other development, better phased, we would, if they submit a master plan for that development, Don, would that work? To show this is where the open space is gonna go, and then we wouldn't require a bond?
I think we could do that.
We wouldn't tie up any money.
I'm, I'm okay with that, too, yeah, I, because I, I think we need to see it, um, but, uh.
It would just be something that, it would just be a master plan that would go through to say, we're gonna have six phases and all the good stuff, the open space is over here, and it's in phase four, or whatever.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, I, I hate to see it go to like, you know, it's not till the final phase, ten years later, that you put it in, uh, but.
It's gonna be in a later phase, because the first couple of phases are designed to generate income.
Right, exactly, and, and I guess, I guess of the master plan completion, and again, I don't wanna attempt to pin the tail on the donkey, but I, I'd like to see that go in by, you know, seventy percent completion of a master plan, rather than at ninety-nine, and then we've got that one bit left that, oh, you know what, we just can't afford to do that anymore, um, so I, I don't, I don't know what that magic number is, but, um, anyway, and I don't know if my other council members have any thoughts on that.
I mean, I, I think an overall master plan.
I just, yeah.
I, I, I get the point, the point's well taken.
Uh huh.
Yeah. On the other side, the intent here was to try to, try to get it where it doesn't come ten years later, but, um, some things have to be master planned, too.
Spencer, was your comment regarding this? Spencer had asked if he could make a comment.
So, uh, Spencer Jones, um, I like, um, you know what Paul's talking about, the master plan, of having it addressed in the master plan, and then, like with Jonathan, um, maybe just to kind of clarify a little bit further with the engineering department, that the developer actually submits in an engineer's estimate of, um, things that are in that phase, and so, I think if, if the engineering department is, is comparing the phased plans with the master plan to make sure that, that the open space really does happen in accordance with the master plan, um, and then when the open space comes up in that phase, that the engineering department, and, and this is what's been happening, I think already, the engineer, um, for the developer has in the engineer's estimate, the open space and how many square feet, and the cost of landscape, and everything like that, and that's included in the bond, so then that way, the city's assured that it, it is going to happen, um, and so I think it's just, you know, some coordination, I don't know if the engineering department's currently doing this, but I, I would, I don't want to add more burden, but I don't think it'd be too hard to, to, you know, look at a master plan that's been approved at all phases, and then as each phase comes through, just make sure that it's in harmony with that master plan, and then the city's protected that way. That, my real comment that I wanted to bring up was at the very beginning here on this slide, um, and I appreciate everything that Donald's done here for the most part, other than one item, we're talking here in open space, I think that we're all in favor, I shouldn't say in favor, but give and take, I, we don't see anything real glaring in this ordinance, other than what we're talking about, the open space, allowing that to be consolidated and really be a material benefit to the community versus splitting up in little phases, but there is, if, Jonathan, if you could maybe just go to the very beginning, it was, um, something I think that was, something maybe added this morning or something, so under thirty-eight eight-four, right there, um, the way I understand that, and maybe just kind of find out maybe some reasoning that we're, the city's thinking here with adding that additional language, is, would existing townhome projects be able to happen with the lot sizes and, and dimensions and so forth they have, because the way I read this, and maybe I'm just understanding incorrectly, is a lot of the PUD currently right now is with R three, and so then the R three would be subject to that first, um, what, nine thousand square feet for the first two units, and then fifteen hundred square feet for each.
That's, uh, that's true.
Okay, so I, I guess just want to make sure that, that it's not something that's gonna materially change how townhome developments are being done currently.
I think it would just be, uh, you gotta leave that within, six, four thousand, fifteen hundred, uh, for this, so, all that's the same, it's kind of repetitive, and, and, and the ordinance.
So, so it wouldn't necessarily be that, that the first two units have to be on a nine hundred square, ninety-five hundred square feet, then, go to be more based on density of the whole?
Yeah, density of the whole.
Okay.
Yeah, first phase, I don't think there's an issue with.
Okay.
As long as that first phase has, you know, there is a reference.
Well, you're there, Spencer, and, uh, we require a CAD file? At least that's the way it's written out, right? Is that a fair thing to request?
Yeah, that's, uh, on my own.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any other questions on the, uh, the open space considerations?
I guess my concern would be, is that, same as Councilman Melling, I wouldn't want to see the open space in the last phase of the project, so, I, I don't know if you've got any ideas how to, how to control that, so they can consolidate it, if they put it in the master plan, but then they never make it to that final phase, or fifteen years down the line, they make it to there, I mean, we've got one large development in town that the people are always coming in complaining, our developer plan, you know, promised we would have parks, why won't the city put some parks, and, and that didn't ever happen because they haven't finished building it out, so.
Yeah, I don't.
Any thoughts there?
What, what, what you see in the text was my attempt to try to address that, um, but I, I don't have any thoughts immediately, we'd have to take a look at it, I don't know.
I mean, I, I know, and this is kind of just spitballing, but what if we had a, you know, if you had the, um, accepting, uh, buildings, you know, you, uh, you know, pool house, you know, anything like that, that's like major infrastructure that definitely needs HOA dues to maintain, you know, if it's, if it's open space, I would like to see at least fifty percent of the master planned open space completed by seventy percent of the units, or, you know, some, something like that, so that you're, so that you can't get to that ninety-ninth one and say, oh, I don't have money to do it anymore, because I, I know that, that is a concern, and then it's, then the question is, well, does the city have to go in and build it? Um, and, uh, and I don't know if that metric would get it, so, so if you built seventy percent of your units, you have to have fifty percent of your open space put in, accepting any, you know, buildings or common areas, the big maintenance things, like, you know, I'm talking grass, tree, parks, whatever you're doing, I, I don't know, your staff, what do you?
We would be happy to have a, an email from the Home Builders Association if you have a good suggestion. We, I, I don't know if there's a magic number, but we would be happy to work with you guys, and if you guys can make a suggestion on this and run it.
But the nods are tonight that we don't want it to be in the last section of the development.
Yeah, we just don't want it to be the last thing in.
Uh huh.
Yep, we would like it to be all in one place.
Yep.
Right? Key smell.
Uh huh.
We'd want it sooner than later.
Well, that's what I was thinking, if, if you're gonna designate a space, um, as, you know, common area, for lack of words, park, whatever, and you master plan it in this corner of the development, which is actually in phase three, or will be, I see what Don's trying to do to get it phased, so it gets done, is why not do the percentage of that with each phase in that area? In other words, if they were doing a park, they would have some area for the phase one tenants to use, you know, while the other two-thirds is being developed later, possibly, is that where you are headed with trying, that way it locks it into a phase, if you have a percentage, it's gotta be done, you know, say it's a three-phase, and say a third of it's gotta be developed with phase one in that space.
Other than if it's across the way with a bunch of sagebrush in between.
Well, yeah.
I'm thinking out loud, but.
But I don't know, that's just one thought I had, but.
Possible solution could just be, in a multiple-phase PUD, no open space should be provided in the last phase of development, and the developer can pick and choose how they number those phases, what's best for them, but at least that last phase, there's no open space, we know that has to be built prior to getting to that last one.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do, I, I think, you know, in some part, um, Don's, uh, that, uh, thousand-foot distance, uh, minimum, you know, that does, for, especially for much larger developments, it does split up that space effectively, so if you have a much larger development, you, you are gonna have to put in, uh, one space before another, uh, but, uh, um, yeah, I'd be, I'd be curious, I, I think there's enough work on this, I, I'm going to, at, at least in my mind, I'm thinking that we might table this till next week anyway, but we'll see, but I would be, you know, I, I'd like to look at what home builders would suggest to kind of, uh, um, get us to where we'd like to be, um, kind of achieve the goals we're trying to achieve without, uh, creating undue burden, and, uh, kind of see where we get with that.
Don, thank you for everything that you've done. I would, I would just move that we table this in the same sense that we table the SHD ordinance, uh, do these rewrites, and take, take it up and finish a week.
I have one other question before we do that, just as a general note, there's several places.
I've made that motion.
Okay, and this is maybe a question before the, the second on the motion, um, several places in unit references, this will happen, this will happen by, with the approval of the city engineer, what I, what I want to make sure doesn't happen by unintended consequences, do we assign PD projects to different engineers or engineering divisions? Because maybe it needs to say with the approval of the city engineering department, I, I don't want to become a bottleneck and hold things up, so it's just a question.
So typically, that's generic language to say engineering's gotta sign off on it.
Okay, as long as everybody understands that.
It's not, it's not typically meant to restrict the city engineer to be the only one, he can delegate that to somebody else.
All right, very good, thank you. I would second that motion made by Councilman Isom.
Okay, roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Isom.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Were there any other parts that we missed on this? This was the final one, right?
I wanted to, uh, the rest was the guest parking.
Oh, we, sorry.
And, uh, so just, just as a note, you can see it says additional, addition of twenty, uh, point two zero guest parking spaces per unit.
Point two.
So you're looking at one, uh, one guest space per five units.
And that's not per bedroom, it's a per unit?
Per unit.
Okay.
Previously suggested point five, you can look at lots of cities, these things really run the gamut, um.
And I, and I think this rewrite that you've done has come a long way. I really do, so.
The rest is pretty much what you've originally had in your packet. And this is the primary, um, we just want to make sure, but the, the primary street was identified to make sure that, uh, it was clear that someone couldn't argue, well, it's just a driveway, or well, it's, it's not a street. The idea is if it's required for fire or trash collection, it needs to be twenty-six feet wide. That's, that's, that's the idea.
Great. Thank you much.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Okay, item number ten is to consider a resolution authorizing the CCPD to provide private security.
Standing in council, Darren Adams with the police department. Do you have any clarifying questions on the resolution language that was presented last week?
I would, I would move to approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Item number eleven, consider a resolution amending the city's banner application, banner policy, and consolidated fee schedule. Danny?
Good evening, council. Danny Stewart, Economic Development. Uh, if you recall, this is, uh, just an update to our banner policy and to the documents associated with our fee schedule and our application. Reflects that we have more banner poles and that we're limiting, um, the number of banners available to forty-six, with the exception that they can be more with approval. Made the changes that that approval would come from city staff.
I just have one question on the fee schedule. I was looking at, said anything, I believe over forty-seven or forty-six went to five dollars and ten cents a banner?
Yes.
To put up?
Yeah. We, we used that from the, the fee schedule as it existed before. That was the next tier, the highest level of that next tier. There were several tiers above that, up to eighty-two.
Right. But it seemed like it was as, if I just looked, maybe the top tier was maybe four hundred. I don't know what the top tier ended up being. I don't have it right in front of me, but I just want to make sure we're not pricing our, our nonprofits, whether it be, uh, the university, whether it be the Canyon Creek Services, Shakespeare, whoever it is, out of the possibility of doing this program. We need to cover our costs, but I want to make sure that we're not getting to the point where we price out the people to do the project.
Yeah, I understand that and that makes sense. And if, if you look at that, the, um, it's, it's tiered, one to fourteen banners, five to twenty-five.
Right.
Twenty-six to thirty-five. And then the last one would now be thirty-six to forty-six banners. Beyond that before, there were four more tiers and it went incrementally up. What we did is we took the forty-six to fifty-five banners.
Mm-hmm.
Averaged it out per banner on that and, and took the, the high end. So it's, it's really less than a dollar a piece more than what they were paying at the, the tier below that.
Okay.
So it's, it's in line with what we have. In fact, if they, if they got more than ten, if they were approved to get more than ten, then they would actually be getting a break on, on some of those.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the math worked and we weren't pricing those folks out of the ability to do this, because most of them are nonprofits, whether it be, you know, the Heritage Festival, whatever it is.
Right. And they're already paying for the banner. We just want to make sure that the cost of our.
Sure.
Staff is being covered.
Sure. Thank you. I would make a motion to approve this, uh, resolution amending the city's banner application and banner policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. I move that we adjourn this meeting so that we can reconvene in our work meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll need a couple minutes for the recording to catch up.
Get some more water.
Better than last week. Better than last week.
It is. It is.
That was a great exercise in that it got all the new ideas out. You guys talked about them in the public and then at the end of the day you said you liked that idea and not that one. Yeah.
Thanks for writing up that commercial stuff, because I feel like.
Yeah, well, it's.
I think that's something, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I.
In fact, I'm surprised that we didn't consider that when we set up the zone.
Well, and I, I, um, well, even like with, I sent everything in, it just didn't make it into planning conditions for whatever reason. So I, um, no, I, I think, I don't know, I've gone back and forth with like residents, students, Bill. I, I think it strikes a pretty good balance.
The, I've already.
This was installed when we installed.
Two thumbs up.
Okay.
I think the only thing you got on the zero setback, I was going to mention, and I didn't, was the, you're getting into residential areas.
Maybe we need one of those podiums that goes up in the middle.
Right.
No setback. And look at ERA Realty Center on two and a half north of these asterisks.
Right, right, right.
Because the sidewalks aren't the same depth as they are downtown. Where you got six to eight foot sidewalks.
And he's not here.
And if it's a four foot.
He's not here.
Coming doors open and coming out onto that, especially next to the street.
And that's one of the issues too with like ERA, you're not going to have much of the street traffic. The goal here is to disincentivize the businesses that, that don't care.
They ain't in a dollar short, right?
It should be for students. I, I don't want, and I don't want a Taco Bell with a drive-through line like next to the, you know, I mean, so.
I don't remember exactly how that got in there. That, you know, RA's, it's only, and it's just, because I, I mean, I didn't work for them many, many years ago and it's been a hazard. They've opened the doors and knocked people on the streets.
Yeah.
And then you knock them out into the street.
Right, right. Is that a, so was that built as a realty office then? It wasn't a, a house or something for that?
It was a house, but they added on to the house.
They added on to the, so, so it was, it was always a business when it got up to this.
It had the twenty or twenty-five foot setback and then they added on to it and did away with the setback. Went clear to the property line, which is one foot behind the sidewalk, so.
Right.
What's that?
Yeah. It was, I don't remember, that was way before.
Maybe I'll, I'll.
Anyway, that was just one thought on it.
Oh, wow.
Have you been there that was forever ago?
The internal part, yeah, I'll.
Only because you're getting in residential, there are a few of those that would be like on, on its south.
That was a long time ago.
You got residences.
Right.
You know, most of them are rentals.
And, and the, and the zero setback would only be against that street, not the.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I'll.
I mean, other than that, I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
I'll look at that and see. Yeah, I never even thought of zero setback until some of the comments.
You got a good memory, man.
Got me thinking, well, maybe I should, you know, if, if we allow it closer to like the downtown type ordinance, then, then you're discouraging the parking in the front. That's what we don't want. We do not want parking in the front of our just commercial areas because.
Right.
Then, you know, that, then you're adding traffic to the neighborhood. The goal is to decrease vehicle use in the university, so.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, and that's just technical, but I had, I had my wife read through them, because she deals with all that stuff.
Oh, uh-huh.
And one technical note was, um, it's Highway fifty-six doesn't technically start until it's.
Right, right.
Put it out.
Councilman Adams?
Oh, really?
So it should be addressed as two hundred north.
Councilman Adams?
Yeah.
We, we're ready when you are.
Ready, okay. Everybody, everybody's here, aren't they? Except for Scott. Where's Scott go?
We're waiting for Mr. Phillips.
Hi, I'm sorry. Uh, the mic is not on, but I do not understand. A public meeting has people that are not wearing masks. I, I'm very concerned about that. This room doesn't have adequate ventilation and you have people sitting for hours. I'm sorry, that is a lack of leadership. I'm sorry, this is very dangerous and the people are not adhering to the CDC recommendation. And you should all consider that, because you're cutting your own legs off. Our economy cannot handle people getting sick and not having schools and doctors and nurses. And I'm really surprised that you people sitting there with smiles saying, well, it's their choice. No, it is a leadership thing.
Is this part of the meeting?
You're permitting this to happen in this meeting and I don't appreciate that.
Is that part of the meeting?
No.
We're ready.
Nothing between, we're ready now. Okay, we'd like to call the city council work meeting to order for December second, twenty twenty. Um, we'll begin with the business agenda. Um, under the public section, item number one, Sunset Canyon Detention Basin. Diana Blodgett, you're the one that's going to.
Diana Blodgett, and I'm not going to touch this. My husband requests that you fix the microphone, by the way. That's his request.
Mine as well.
Thanks. I wanted to keep my thoughts organized, so I typed my, I typed up my remarks. This will just be a few minutes of your time. And if anyone needs a copy of my remarks.
Just run on.
I've got them. Sorry, let me grab this for you.
Are we sure on what this is? Ms. Blodgett, because we're having issues with that mic, we want to make sure we can get your voice, so if that gets you just to speak up just a little bit.
I'll do my best. That's, that's not my strong suit, I'm sorry.
I need it.
I, I'll, I'll do my best. Um, I, I am, tonight I'm representing the neighborhood of Sunset Canyon and the, the Sunset Canyon Estates neighborhood. And our purpose in addressing you today is twofold. We have a request to make, but first we want to offer our genuine gratitude. In June, a detention basin was dug in our neighborhood ten feet from my family's property line. The result was a nineteen-foot-deep safety hazard. Through the significant efforts of many of you in this room, our concerns have been addressed and we are well on our way to improving that safety hazard, our neighborhood safety. We look forward to the installation of the subsurface detention system and as a neighborhood, we want to thank you for listening to our concerns and responding in kind. Second, we request that the surface area of the detention basin be maintained by the city in, or in accordance with our neighborhood CCNRs and the standard we enjoy in Sunset Canyon. We discussed the property with the two, two of the owners of the Burgess's construction and they both said they will be deeding the property to the city. So while technically it isn't city property right now, it soon will be. Obviously, this isn't the time to be doing anything with the surface area, but we ask that you please consider this request when planning out Cedar City's twenty-twenty-one budget. Our desire tonight is simply to bring this suggestion to your consideration. Throughout this process, we have been in contact with several Utah stormwater engineers who discussed their stormwater management sites with us. All of their sites are city-maintained and double as a recreational area for nearby residents. I've included a few photos of examples of stormwater management areas in other Utah cities in your council packets. Stated in the Salt Lake, Salt Lake City Utility Documents and also included in your council packet, it states the following. Although the primary purpose of detention basins is for flood control, these basins also provide both open space and recreational amenities for the community. Many of the basins are landscaped and attractive. Under normal conditions, these basins are dry, which allows large play areas for recreational activities. Many have playground equipment installed for children to enjoy. In an urbanized setting, detention basins provide the community additional open space to relieve the visual sight of structures that make up the cityscape. Landscape detention basins provide a quiet place to play, read a book, or take a nap. Let me be clear, we are not looking for the city to provide us a napping location. We are asking that the city council consider raising the level of city-owned property to that of other Utah communities. As the areas around our neighborhood continue to be developed, each will upkeep their homes and yards in accordance with our neighborhood CCNRs. If this area is simply hydro-seated as planned, it will be an iso, a source surrounded by well-maintained landscaping. Living, living nearby city-owned property shouldn't lower the property value of the surrounding residents. Our Sunset Canyon CCNRs state that all lots shall be used and keep, kept free from trash, rubbish, garbage, or other waste, and the property shall at all times be kept by the various owners in an attractive manner. Since you and I are going to be neighbors, we want to welcome you to the neighborhood and ask that you please follow our CCNRs. We understand that this is not a need. It is also not a need to upkeep the freeway interchanges or the many walking trails or the baseball and soccer fields or the lake at the hills. But these areas are all well-kept because they beautify our community and add to the quality of life of Cedar City residents. Councilman Melling stated in an interview with Cedar City News the following. If we as a city are looking at expecting more from our citizens as far as managing property and things looking nice, we need to be exemplary stewards of property as an entity, as, as Cedar City Corporation. In our neighborhood, we have over three hundred and twenty-three children under the age of eighteen, with more on the way perpetually. The reason for sharing this information is to say that the area would surely be well-used. Again, regardless of what decision is made eventually, with respect to the surface area of this property, we want to thank you for the steps that have been taken to protect our neighborhood's safety. That has been our number one concern throughout this process and we deeply appreciate our safety needs being met. Thank you for your community service and your time. Are there any questions?
I don't think at this time there is, so we're going to be looking at the bid process for this project later tonight, talking about it.
We appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Is this the detention right around the corner?
Yes.
Okay, the one that's.
It's right there.
No.
Nope.
No.
Oh. It is on the corner.
That's the arm, Bruce.
Right there.
Where Jonathan has the cursor.
Yeah.
Jonathan, zoom out now so he can get a.
Okay, but thank you.
Yeah, that's time to see on the west.
There's the arena across the street there, Tom.
I, I see where it's down.
Thank you.
So typically would this not have been required for the developer to put the detention basin in? And, I mean, the fact that it's like, here's the law, now you build it and, and then they want it to look nice in their neighborhood and whatnot.
So, this is the first I've heard that the owner is going to deed it to the city. The city doesn't have to accept that and don't have to take that property.
Right.
So right now, the only thing the city has is the ability to use that for a detention bond. Why the developer didn't put that in originally, staff hasn't been able to come up with an answer.
I've heard various stories depending on who I talk to.
Okay.
All I know is it's not in and it needs to be in so we.
Right.
We don't flood the neighboring subdivision that's going in.
It does.
And this storm basin will actually provide flood control measures for, uh, some of the neighborhoods that are up on the hillside from it. There's a storm drain line that runs down and drains into it. So it needs to go in. But yes, you're right, typically the developer would be required to put this in.
Well, and couldn't it potentially flood some of those, i-if we didn't put it in? If, if it came down off the hill, it could flood some of those lower homes there in the Sunset Canyons.
No, because everything coming off the hill's in a pipe. And that pipe runs, uh, north to this empty lot.
But I, I do understand what she's saying about the appearance. We've got to be careful about what we'd put in there and, and yet it's got to be something that we have the ability to maintain, but we can't have it develop and then become a potential weed patch or something like that. So we'll have to look at that as we look down the road at this project.
But right now, we don't have the authority to do anything.
Correct. Correct. Yes. Maybe the Burgess's need to take care of it.
So we don't need to move that on then, do we? Because we don't have it, so... But appreciate the presentation, though.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
To...
And waiting.
Just getting that, yeah, till we get it. Till we're done, I guess.
Yeah.
Oh, we appreciate that. Yeah. Yeah, we do. Thank you. Okay, item number two is to consider approving a road dedication at 250 South Cross Hollow Road.
So Mr. Watson called me right before 5:00. He's not gonna meet it tonight. So I said I would just review what I remember from the planning commission, and he'll be here next week if there's any additional questions. So this street here, this is 250 South, coming up Cross Hollow Road. Directly to the south of that would be where that kind of detention basin is. This is, 250 South is a master-planned road. Eventually, this will punch through over the hill into the old sorrel subdivision. So they want to develop the property directly to the north. Part of that requires them to put in this dedicated street.
Since it's part of our dedicated road, and I know we changed that a few years ago, I don't see a real problem with this for it to be developed.
I guess the only question I had was on the public utility easement. It's only showing 10-foot. If they develop commercial, can we increase that from what we approve now? Or how does that work? Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, so this is 250 South when it goes west of Cross Hollow, not the east end of it as it goes up the hill? That's a cul-de-sac, right?
There's a hill on each side.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
On the east and the hill on the west.
Right, so this is the westbound part of it? Okay.
The west side of Cross Hollow.
Okay, that makes more sense then. Okay, thank you.
All right, can we put that on consent?
Yeah.
That's done. Okay. All right, item number three. Consider a proposed property trade in the vicinity of 375 North Cross Hollow Road.
Hey, so, can I touch that? Does it work?
Touch that.
David Holmes, JD Capital. We're both property owners on this property line on Cross Hollow Road. And you can see the property line as it is now is kind of on an angle. We're proposing that we make that 90 degrees to Cross Hollow Road and trade property, so it's a little more useful for both of us.
I couldn't tell for sure where it is. Is this just west of Genpac? Like, on that corner kind of property?
The corner here that the city...
Where the gas company and whatnot?
Yeah, that would be the city's corner parcel at the top of the page there. Just west of the AmeriGas.
If you go just north of that, you hit the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
And then Highway 50.
Okay.
So the striped area, which part is the city on and which part do you own? So the city owns the top. Okay. And then I own the piece to the south. Got it. How do you work these things? There. I own this piece. City owns this piece. Right now, that's the property line. The old Cross Hollow Road was right here. So this was the right-of-way for the old Cross Hollow Road. Gotcha. And so we're proposing that the city take this piece here, and we take this piece here, make this a 90-degree property line. So procedurally, what do we need to do to...
So we just initiate the process?
Initiate the process. Council wants to move forward, we'll vote positively next week. We'll have Dave go out, and he'll get a appraiser to come in and match up the area of land, try to get it as equal as possible. He'll give us a value on that, and we'll still have to put that out to public bid. And then we'll bring that back to city council for final approval.
Hmm, okay.
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 Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Move that on consent.
Thanks for waiting through, David. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, David. Okay, we'll move into the staff portion of the agenda with item number four. Consider bids for the Pressurized Irrigation Water Meters Project 2020. Don Davis.
Hi, Don Davis, project engineer. So for this project, we do have a budget of $100,000. We just got some bids back last week. And the low bid was Munford General Contracting at 47,905. That is under the $50,000 threshold. I've already, Mr. Bittman helped me get a mayor's approval for this project, so we're just letting you guys know that we are proceeding with this project.
And...
The way our purchasing policy works, it sets dollar cutoffs. There's a $50,000 cutoff that says if it's under $50,000 and it's in the budget, we gotta let the council know, and the Americans say, "Go ahead." So that's, we're just letting you know.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Nothing for us to do, then?
Nothing, no, it's done.
Information-only?
Yes, sir. Yep. The purpose of letting the council know, quite frankly, was cars. Was the big concern when we wrote the policy. Cars are getting more expensive. They're getting around the $50,000 mark. And council's really concerned on where we buy our cars from. At the time we adopted the policy, so that's why they said, "You at least gotta come and tell us."
No, I think it's good. It's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, item number five then. Consider bids for the Sunset Canyon Subsurface Stormwater Detention Basin.
Right. Again, Don Davis, project engineer. We've been looking at this project since I started as a project engineer with the city. It's been a pretty hot topic. And so we are, of course, in need of a stormwater detention basin to detain stormwater and prevent any flood damage downstream of this area as we were showing on the map earlier. Residents of the subdivision and nearby subdivisions have had lawyers send letters to the city regarding the stormwater flooding issues. A temporary solution is currently in place, but further work is required. A budget for this project has not been approved, and all current work has been paid for by the Street Department's Storm Drain Fund. We've used some of their money to design the storm drain lines and create a proposal package and advertise for competitive bids. We also implemented that temporary solution and have been renting a fence that goes around the area. As Ms. Blodgett mentioned, that 19-foot drop, we think it's important that we have a temporary fence around there. So two proposals were received by the advertised deadline. The Pro Value Engineering and ACF West has shown up on the screen. The low bid was Pro Value Engineering at just shy of $115K. So I recommend that the contract be awarded Pro Value Engineering contingent on budget approval.
So we would award the contract, hopefully, you'll vote yes. We'll award the contract to Pro Value. We'll let them know that the funds necessary for a budget won't be available until middle of January at the earliest. If the council doesn't approve the funds in the budget revision, then we'll give them notice that we're not going to proceed.
I have a couple of questions then. So the money that has been expended by the Street Department Storm Drain Fund right now, would that be replenished as part of this proposal if the budget is approved?
So if you see what's on the screen now, the proposed budget's gonna be $250,000.
Right.
There's $115,000 in there for the Pro Value Engineering contract. Previous engineering and Street Department stuff is also included in there.
Okay. Then the second question I have is just an understanding for me that if we don't own the property and it still belongs to another entity, are we okay to go in and work on this property?
We have an easement to construct a storm drain facility on the property. So we're perfectly capable of doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Diana Blodgett. Mr. Bittman, is this the Storm Tech Company that you emailed me about? Are they the same as what he said?
So the Pro Value Engineering guys work with the Storm Tech guys.
So that's the same thing?
And in their proposal, the Pro Value Engineering guys, their proposal, they were gonna use that Storm Tech system. That was the orange...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great system, by the way. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so... Come up.
Thank you.
You didn't give me the look like our normal mayor does.
Say your name.
Tom Jett. Keep me straight here. The, I'm a little bit confused. We had Ms. Blodgett here speaking a few moments ago about, is this the same storm drain, the same spot as she's speaking? So maybe I've missed something in previous conversations. Why is the city putting up the money to... What are we putting up the money to do? We're budgeting $250,000. What are we budgeting $250,000 for us?
For a detention basin. That wasn't put in 20 years ago or 25 years ago when the development was developed.
But is that the city's responsibility? Don't we go back to the developer?
So the bond was released?
Well, but, well, the bond was released, but the developer still failed in their obligation to...
We don't have a legal claim against the developer anymore.
I can't, what?
No legal claim against them.
There's no legal remedy that we have to go after that developer. There's a lot, there's a lot of, I don't know, what am I gonna say? There's a lot of communication back and forth on why that didn't put in. The city can't determine 100% why or why it was or wasn't. So this is on the city.
Oh, okay, well, thank you for the clarification.
And to clarify, my understanding is generally, once the city releases the bond, the developer is done. So that's why we do checklists and things like that when, before we release.
Yeah. All right, now I understand. Thank you. This, and just, Ms. Blodgett, this was not a thing, saying we shouldn't have it. I just didn't know why the city was in that situation. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do we need to keep this off of, or can we go ahead with consent? Because we're gonna have to redo the budget and all that that'll come later, right? So if you guys approve the award of the bid on consent, just know staff's not gonna spend any money that's not budgeted. So we'll wait until that comes.
Correct. Okay. And that'll be clarified to the contractor, the winner of the bid.
Yeah, we'll make sure the bid owner, or the winner of the bid knows that budget's not gonna be approved for another month and a half.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And I have already communicated that with...
Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, item number six. Consider the AIP 038 grant application for the airport to purchase a new snow broom.
Yep, good evening, council. This is Nick Holt, Airport Manager. So AIP 38 grant application, it's an AIP grant. The airport's entitled to $1 million in grant funding. So with this grant, we'd like to purchase a snow-removal broom. Currently, it takes the airport about two, two-and-a-half hours to clear the primary surfaces, which is the main runway, the parallel taxiway, and then the taxiway leading to the commercial ramp. We have a federal requirement to be able to clear that surface within 30 minutes. And our consultants have looked at the numbers of what pieces of equipment we need to acquire to be able to meet that requirement of 30 minutes. And the airport board, we've taken this through airport board, and with their recommendation, we're asking to apply for the AIP 038 grant to acquire a snow-removal broom. This grant will be in the amount of $795,000. It's a 95% to 5% match. The 5% is the local match of $39,750. And the 95% match, the federal match, is $755,250. Are there any questions?
So would this grant amount cover the cost of the new snow-removal broom?
Yes, this would be to cover that cost.
And there's nothing wrong with our existing snow-removal broom. This is just in addition so they can do it in a much more expedient manner.
Yep, sequence of each other.
They need the 30 minutes or less clear? Okay, yeah.
Can you explain, I just, you said the million-dollar limit on this. This is not our essential air service million dollars entitlement we get. This is, is this a different one?
This is different. So every year, we're entitled $1 million as long as we have 10,000 people use our airport commercially.
So this is totally separate from ESA, or whatever it might be called now, EAS?
It is, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So does this grant come with a guarantee that we'll have some snow so we can have some water?
That's been a light winner this year.
To use the broom.
I know we need the water, but I'm not complaining about...
You're not complaining, I know.
Be out, plow the runway in the middle of the night, so...
Right. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven.
So do we, are we moving that on to consent?
Oh, let's see, we'll put that on consent, yeah. That's fine. Sorry.
No, it's fine.
I forget what I'm doing over here. All right, item number seven. Consider an ordinance amending the Cedar City Ordinance, Chapter 23, related to short-term rentals and rental dwelling licenses.
All right, so just two, in my opinion, minor amendments to these ordinances. So the first, when we define a residential short-term rental, we outline what zones they're allowed in. And based on some discussions we've had over the last month, I amended it to include the commercial zones, which involve general commercial, central commercial, downtown commercial, and highway services for the mixed-use zone. So those, that's that single change. And then if we flip to 23-10, which is our long-term rental license, so there's some language that I added that doesn't change anything. It just makes it a little clearer for someone that's maybe not as familiar with our city ordinances. So in the license application, we state that the number, they need to identify the number of parking places that are provided on the premises. And then it says, "A dwelling unit in the R22 and R3M zones rented to more than 480 persons shall have 1.3, and if you're in the SHD zone, you'll have 0.075." Well, if I read that ordinance alone, someone could believe, and someone did, that they could put eight people in a two-bedroom home. But you need to read that as well, and in conjunction with Chapter 26 that says, "Well, you can only have one per bedroom." The council changed that definition about a year ago or so.
Yeah.
So I just added some language saying, "Is governed by Chapter 26." So at least the reader of that knows they need to go to that chapter to get some clarifying information.
Okay.
Make it more user-friendly.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like the amendments that you're putting forth.
Say your name, please.
Terry Kenny. I like the amendments that you're putting forth here. I think they're good. I just wanted to state that there are still a number of us who are very concerned about this issue and continue to be concerned about it. There were 11 of us here earlier. I think we've got about six of us still here. But anyway, we do appreciate your continued consideration of the short-term rental issue and kind of tweaking it here and there as needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a clarifying question for Tyler. So as part of this process, I guess, in the simplest terms possible, if somebody were applying for a business license to do a short-term rental in a residential area versus a commercial area, does that process look any different as far as whether it's parking, fire code, ADA? In a commercial zone, do they have higher standards that are expected of commercial entities?
The applications exactly.
The application is the same, but, so there may be other ordinances, but as far as local ordinances, it's the same? Okay.
So some of your, some of your building requirements in the commercial zone, when you actually go to construct the building, with the commercial-rated fire structure on that building, those might be different than a home. But as far as your business licensing, year to year, that wouldn't change. But your construction methods and all the stuff up front, that might be impacted?
Yeah, and that's what I was getting at. So there, even though there's no difference at the local ordinance level, there may be other requirements for a commercial building in a commercial zone.
Mike, is it, if I do an Airbnb in a residence versus an Airbnb on the second floor above a restaurant, are there gonna be different fire code requirements? Yeah, so, but those all come with construction.
Yeah, they don't have different codes if it's above a restaurant.
Was that the nature?
Yeah, no, I was just, I know that was one of the... Yeah, no, I, I was just, I know that, that was one of the, just in the discussion as far as.
My name's Mike Phillips. The mayor's watching that.
So, so, so let's say for, Mike, Mike, wait, 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 okay. So, so if, if somebody were to want to construct a building new in a commercial zone solely for the purpose of short-term rentals, are there requirements going to be more similar to building a private residence or more similar to building a hotel from a fire code and building code standpoint?
Really depends on the size of the building, how many square feet it is, the codes, there's no easy path through the code.
Right.
Depends on the size, what's the occupancy, how many people's going to be in it, et cetera.
Okay.
So if it's a small one, then yeah, they build it under the residential code. If they had a great big one, then it would go into the, the fire code.
And, and the code that applies more has to do with the use rather than the zone?
Yes.
Okay.
Fire code doesn't care about zones.
Okay.
Thanks, chief. Okay, any other comments?
Action agenda?
Okay, we'll put her on the action then. Move on to item number eight, save the best for last, the most exciting part is Mr. Jason Norris to tell us about the budget.
So he punted it to me. So when our budget was passed in June, we did a number of things because of the virus and we delayed some spending. We put it all in the budget, but we delayed implementation of it and it takes a form primarily of capital expenditures and expenditures on personnel. And what we told the public and the council at that point was, we're going to see what our actual revenues look like over the next half a year before we recommend what to do with those things that we delayed. Well, we're at the half a year mark, or we're as close as we're going to get with our meeting schedule, and we have five months of actual data. We've picked three data points to analyze and they're property tax, sales tax, and biz, or I'm sorry, building permit fees. Over the five months that we've watched, sales taxes increased over 20% each month. Talked to the county treasurer on Monday and she had a reconciliation of our property tax receipts. She said they're probably going to increase, because I called her early Monday and lots of people, because Monday was the last day in November, last day to pay, lots of people pay at the end of Monday because they want to pay as late as they can. So she told me that our property tax receipts were up over 20% from last year. And our building permits, again, they're up over 20% from what we had last year. In addition to delaying some of that spending, we also budgeted our revenues based on prior year actuals, we have a conservative revenue budgeting. So we're asking, like, we're, we're letting the council know that we've hit the six months, we're in a positive place with our budget and our revenue flows. We're recommending that we proceed with the other half of the capital spending and that we also proceed with the other half of the personnel spending and that we make that personnel spending kick in so that it hits paychecks on the 24th instead of waiting until two weeks later in January. That's what we're asking to do. Now, there was a number of things, including the detention pond over in Sunset Canyon, that were not budgeted in June. And these things include, not just that project, but we're talking about it tonight, so we'll use that one, but they also include personnel requests and they also include operational requests. We've started the process to reevaluate just what was in the budget presentations last year, it wasn't an invitation to open up a whole new proposal or a whole new set of proposals, it was limited to what was proposed for this budget. Jason's going to have a budget revision on the agenda for the first meeting in January. We do a mid-year budget revision typically every year. And we will get to you, because we're not done, we don't know what we're going to ask for yet, but that's when we would ask for any additional budget money to do any additional spending on personnel, capital, or operations.
What, what kind of things are you referring to when you say the personnel issues that you want to do by the 24th?
So in this current year budget, there was a number, there was a, a budget approved to increase employee, full-time employee salaries. We only implemented a portion of that in July.
Ah.
And we said, along with that, forestalling the capital spending, we would wait and see what our revenues look like before we pulled the trigger on that other half.
Other half of the increases.
Correct, and it's not exactly 50/50.
No, I understand.
I use half as just a convenience.
I just thought that was automatic, I didn't realize that was also pulled back in the six month, okay. Thank you.
Can I ask Jason where we are with the audit?
For December 31st, that's what it's due, so we're working towards that. Doing budget revisions. Everything else.
So first of the year, we'll know.
So Mr., oh, go ahead, Jason, sorry. No, go ahead. I was just going to say, so, so do we need to actually approve what you're, I mean, how, how does it move forward?
Well, everything we've talked about as far as the stuff that's in the current year budget, it's in the current year budget. We've brought it to the council for a couple of reasons, one, so we can give you a report like we told you we would on where we think we are with revenue. Two, so we can talk about it publicly, and then three, to ask you to vote to, in favor of those three
Got it.
Things, so that we know we're supported in moving forward.
Okay.
Paul, just to piggyback off one of your comments I heard today that I think was very interesting in the percentage of building permits that have gone up. I found out today that we were in, just issued the 700 and something building permit for the year, which is the largest amount we've ever issued in the history of the city.
Wow. Not surprised.
So our vote for you to proceed on what we agreed to, as far as capital spending?
Yeah.
And employee raises.
And employee, yeah.
And also kicking in the employee raises on the 24th.
Okay.
So. So do we need to?
Action agenda next week?
Do we want that on action?
I don't know that that's necessary, so all of this is captured in the approved budget.
Right.
Right.
It's discussed prior, public hearing, et cetera, it's just notification that we said if the economic climate is not in line with our budget proposal, then we're going to make some adjustments.
I understand the timing for the 24th. Is that what was contemplated when we approved it the way we did?
No. But when we looked at the calendar, when we started looking at our revenues, we looked at the calendar, said, gee whiz, it would be nice if we kicked them in on the 24th.
I'm all in on support of that, I just want to know what we need to do.
Yeah, so all we're asking for is a simple vote next week to support moving forward with the capital, moving forward with the personnel, and kicking it in on the 24th. So do you want to keep it on action, do you want any further?
They can go on consent.
Yeah, I think.
The bonds are okay, okay, let's put it on consent then.
And I move that we adjourn this meeting so that we can go into closed session.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, beginning with councilman Isom.
Hi.
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 Thank you, okay. Break for a second.